Morning Bruce.
Morning.
Welcome to Snow Country.
Mr. Chairman.
How you come from Snow Country?
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is our weekly county commissioner meeting. Today is December 5th. This time I please ask everyone to rise to say the pledge. Rita, you want to lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rita for doing that. Here we have a little change in the agenda. I need a motion to approve adding claims at 9:05.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve adding the approval of the claims for today.
I'll second that. And approve the rest of the agenda.
And approve the rest of the agenda.
Thank you very much. We have a motion second on favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we'll get right on.
What time is that right now?
Yep, right now. We're going to get right to her right now. We'll go right on down to our agenda item. This is an action item. Claims Rita, I'll turn it over to you.
So we have three claims, one for FY22 and grant match. And then something new for the sheriff's department. So I'm not sure what it is.
My question because on the claims for last year, we had closed all of that out. Do we have to reopen it at all?
We haven't closed it yet.
You haven't closed it. My understanding was when we did all of the amendments last week to that, that would have closed it?
Yeah, that's a good point.
It hasn't been completed yet.
That's correct. Computer Arts has not closed out our financial for fiscal year 2022 as of yet. We do have an opportunity, but this will be the last claim that we will be allowing for that time period.
Do we need to amend anything as far as? So we made a bunch of adjustments last week. Does this put that department over?
It will not.
Okay.
Commissioner Martin.
Rita, I don't remember the waterways for 35,000. That was for a dock?
The grant match for the Crown Point dock.
That was approved like three years ago. It was actually put in a long time ago and then it was never funded. So they were asking if it was still available. And obviously it was, so we're now paying that.
And the 4962 was jail security camera system.
Yeah. And I believe that's the first billing for that.
Okay, so it's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would have moved that we approve the bills as presented.
I'll second it.
Who didn't second it on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need to add that to the agenda out front.
I'm sorry, what?
I was going to go put it on the or change the agenda out front, but it's already been done.
So if I understand this right on this waterways thing, this is something like you've said, been going on for several years. I believe I remember some of the discussion about that. That mean we'll just now that these funds will be retracted from the waterways funding for this?
My understanding was that it'd been approved about three years ago. So it was obligated funds.
We talked about it, yeah, once before.
And now, now we will be paying that.
Yeah.
Fulfill that obligation of that.
What does that do to the waterways fund at this point?
$100,000 in there, so.
Yeah.
Lot of money available.
Well, that's before some of the other requests we're going to, so.
I don't know if they put this into some special area that have been obligated funds that it should.
I think probably.
We added.
Somewhere, so.
Commissioners, this was budgeted for in the grant line underwater.
I think I remember this.
They had 75,000. There was an additional 35,000 that is going to be expended later in the year. But there was that this amount was budgeted for in the waterways budget specifically for this grant.
Good deal. Got to see that moving on.
Okay. Okay, we're good with that. We're going to move right on down to our agenda. These are all action items. The next one is approve the meeting minutes on November 28th.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I apologize. I just sent those out this morning. So if you want to delay that, we can.
There are changes Doug, so I don't know. If you didn't get those changed, then we probably should delay it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on down to the cooperative agreement with the University of Idaho Extension Programs. And I think that was.
That's going to be me.
Jill, yep, welcome.
So I put a paper clip on the one that needs to be signed. It's just the annual standard extension agreement.
It looks like Oki has approved this now, so.
Yep, yep, the front page is all signed off. So I would need a motion to approve this, I guess, unless you want to look at it first.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the extension program.
I'll second.
And move to second to approve the cooperative agreement with the University of Idaho Extension Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And will we all three sign this?
Day.
Oh, okay, so we do two of them, right? Mixies all up, you'll have to mix it.
Got this on fancy paper, Joe.
Did you remember when we had our budget hearing? 20?
It was 29th of September, right? We had the approval was September 6th, but the actual budget hearing was August 29th.
We should put that down. County was approved by Valley County at its regular budget meeting on.
So the actual budget was approved on September 6th or adopted by resolution?
6th, okay.
Notary? Okay, if you can take it down to my office, down to the clerk's office, we can get that stamped.
Let's go back to.
Probably Doug.
You have to sign this too, Doug.
On this meeting tomorrow, the webinar and the generations webinar. I can't tell by the header. I didn't send that to these two. Did you send that to these guys? Did, okay.
I should have gotten the information when I sent the directors and elected officials. So I can say it had the link to do.
It just says elected officials and I can't see who's included in that.
Thanks Jill.
Seven members, so.
Hey, I'm not sure what the next one is here. It just says Commissioners Agenda for 23, January 23.
Chairman Hasbrook, Commissioners, I just, after reviewing the IAC Midwinter Conference Agenda, there are several matters on the 30th that I think the Commissioners will probably want to attend.
You need to be there that morning.
Unfortunately, I need to be there that day. So I don't know if the Commissioners want to propose canceling a different meeting in January.
I actually did it on the calendar that I just.
We canceled the second, right?
The third, but I think we're going to have to meet on the third and then cancel out the third.
We can do that. We can meet on the third and cancel the 30th. That work?
I would move that we amend our agenda to include January 3rd and then cancel January 30th due to the IAC conference.
Second? I'll second. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You get caught up here.
Thanks for catching that Doug, because I do have to be there in the morning.
All right.
Commissioners, if you haven't registered, I think the registration is open as well as hotel reservations at the Riverside.
I've registered, but I haven't got my room yet. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is an assessment request for cancellation, cancellation of solid waste fee 14 and 15. Sue, welcome.
Good morning. The first one is a solid waste cancellation and the second one is actually a value cancellation. So cancellation number 14 is for Ted Larson, parcel number RP 12 North 04 East, section 19 0480. All improvements on this property were removed prior to 2022. And so this parcel should no longer be assessed a solid waste fee. And we did assess one for 22. So I'm asking that you cancel that $110 fee.
Hey, I think since these two are totally kind of different, I wish to do each one individually. So I would entertain a motion to approve cancellation number 14.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
I just want a clarification. So all improvements, so if somebody has a shed on their lot, we charge a solid waste fee. So it could be a shed, a manufactured home, whatever.
Yes.
So vacant lots are not charged any fees.
Correct.
As structures on it. I'll second that.
Who didn't second it on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Sue, then we'll move on to 15.
Yep, cancellation number 15 is for Mountain Mission LLC, parcel number RP 00489 000 0010. So I need to bring to your attention, the one acre was valued at full market value. And usually anything over an acre is valued at a buffer value. Well, this was inputted, so both lines were ran at full market value. And so I got a phone call from Danielle Swinford and I found the error. And I'm asking that we cancel 253,965 in value on the buffer land. I have corrected it for 2023, but we need to correct it for 22.
Chairman, I move that we approve cancellation number 15.
I'll second.
Who didn't second it on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Can I ask one question on that? When you consider a buffer, does that mean it actually can be developed? Or what's the situation? What, how's that fall in?
Well, in Idaho, we have to have like a standard on how to value land. And so across the state of Idaho, we value that first acre at full market value. And then anything over that acre, we would put a buffer value on.
And that is.
Like a less per acre.
Right, but they're not actually using that and they call it buffer.
So let's say you have a 10 acre parcel and they have one home on it and they decide to build a second home. Then we would take another acre out for that second home and let it at full market value as well.
It's not really an agricultural exemption.
No, no. Far from it.
But a buffer value is higher than an egg value?
Oh, yes, quite a bit.
It's higher than rag bag value, okay. Oh, that's clarification.
Yep.
I go back to the solid waste fees on vacant ground. So we've been approving some of these RV campgrounds. They get a solid waste fee? They do.
Anytime there is an RV hookup on a property and that's it, we are putting a solid waste fee because they're hooking their RV up and they're generating trash.
So is it more than two makes them a commercial RV site? Or is it more than three?
I think it's more than two. If you put a third, you got to go through.
The whole park would be at the commercial rate, yeah.
But even then, there's not necessarily an RV hookup. That's what I'm trying to question is at what point do we change that? Because these guys that are bringing their RVs up here and all summer long have some, you know, solid waste use for certain.
Absolutely. So whenever an RV hookup is found on a property, when we're doing reappraisal or.
So when you're saying an RV hookup, is that electric? Is that?
So it can be electric, water, sewer. So in our system, we specify what all it has.
So any improvement?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
And I will be going to the elected official training this week in Boise, so.
Where's that?
It's at the Riverside in Boise.
Oh, is that the Fall Institute, I think they call it?
IAC puts it on.
I'll be there and Neil will be there too.
Neil should be there too.
He is there?
Okay, we're going to move on down to the last item.
There she is.
On our agenda is assigned emergency facilities and land use agreement. Sheriff, welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
They only charged $200 for that entire year.
No, there was no charge. This was an after the fact situation that they didn't have something in case there was damage done. But we just allowed them to use the facility and we have done that in the past as well, so.
This agreement says there was a $200 fee.
Well, that's 200. They had to have a number. And this was after the fact that the fire teams were here using our facility and it says we need to have something in place for that. And so a minimum would be that 200, just to, for them to finish their packet that they need for that fire. And that in the future, we'll remind them that they need that land use agreement. And it would be up to you if you're going to charge them or not for the use of the facility.
So does this then place something in for the future? So next summer, if they need to use it again?
It's up to.
This is just the one time?
This is the one time for this particular fire and yes, in the future that needs to happen at the beginning, so.
Well, I think, you know, for one or two days or even up to a week, I think that's reasonable. But if they're there for longer, then we're going to be subsidized.
And this was, if there was any damage done to the facility, they would pay for that. If you want to charge them for the use, then that would come before you probably. Their team would come or representative from their team or financial would come and talk with Commissioners at that time. So this is just kind of a after the fact, some document that if there was damage done, which there wasn't, then.
I think about that. I mean, they're here supporting our community, so we don't really want to charge them for that. But at the same time, they're using our water.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, just all the utilities. So a minimum fee of 200, I think, is appropriate.
That's fair ask for anybody, really.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be just kind of covered in an overall general purpose of the facility and how?
There isn't anything in place that I'm aware of. And we don't normally let, you know, the public, because we have so many other things going on with, you know, county use of it, so. But this was, you know, they, they got here, they couldn't get their camp set up, you know, right away. They needed a place to meet and brief and get everything in order for the, you know, to fight that fire.
Fits right into the purpose of that.
Right, right, right.
So.
Okay, I think it's appropriate cash for at least a couple hundred bucks to help us cover our expenses. I think it's very reasonable.
In the future, I mean, this has to do with the already used facility. And they just needed a document to say, hey, if there was any damage, the minimum amount would be 200 if, you know, there was damage done.
So what we're authorizing though, Sheriff, is it says $200 on here. Do we need to waive this?
But we're not collecting 200, we're just.
It says we're approving a $200 authorized amount. So are, I guess, are you asking us to waive that $200?
Well, I can get clarity. Is that how you read it? About that they will go ahead and just pay us that minimum anyway? That's not how I read it either, so. If we would have requested that upfront.
No, I think this is very appropriate. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the emergency facilities and land use agreement.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, come on up.
Oh, if we do get a $200 check, then I guess this goes into the operating fund?
Um, that would be a Doug question.
It goes into this lady's revenue, yes, yes, ma'am.
It's right there.
Whoops, sorry.
Where'd you go?
And wifi. That's why we're here. I wonder if they actually had wifi. I guess we do have good wifi over there.
And they have used county land before. I don't know if there was ever a cost, because they always go in and repair anything they find.
What's your phone number?
083827102.
That was, there's no damage done.
There you go.
And you have to sign up on that, so. Better get a copy of it.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we're going to move right on down. We're running a little late, but that's okay. Our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a YCAP update. Carrie, come on up to the mic, please, or anybody else?
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, welcome, good morning. Sorry we were late. We were, we left early enough, we thought we were going to hit it, but then we hit fog.
Yep, you're on time.
So thanks for having us. I just wanted to come and check in and visit with you guys a little bit about what we've been doing in the community and how we can work together to make a bigger impact. We're looking, our funding is a little bit different this year. And I know that already you guys gave us $10,000. And I just wanted to clear up how that money is spent and so that we can make sure that we're using it for the most amount that we can. I know a portion of it goes to our backpack group that we do the back to school stuff. And then a portion of it goes to our seniors and then a portion of it goes to emergency funds and food. But as I've been learning, they said that you guys want us to get reimbursed for the senior pieces of it. But was that, because 3,100 of that 10,000 was for seniors. But I just wanted to double check on your end to make sure that that's part of that 10,000 or is that extra? And so I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same page that way. Because we haven't bailed anything for seniors yet. And so I just wanted to do a check in and see what you guys are thinking that way, just to make sure we understand how you want it done. And then my other part of it is I know you've probably already done your budget, but I was just curious if you were looking at any, I don't know if you have like ARPA funds or COVID, extra COVID money or anything like that. But we are just trying to make a bigger impact in the community, the whole county. And with just two staff, one part time, one full time. And we only have a part time home care assistant right now, a homemaker assistant. So we're serving eight to 10 seniors, whereas we're trying to find another part time. But the funding for our senior program is just not working the way we had hoped. We're still trying to find grant funding. But I know that the need to take care of our seniors is big. And I just didn't know if we could partner or work together on maybe staffing another person who helps our seniors in our community. And if you had funding for that or if that was even an option. I just thought we could put it out there and try talking through it a little bit. I know that the list coming from Area Agency 3 says there are seniors that need care and there's a lot on our list. But we just don't have the funding in our CSBG grant to do that. And I just thought maybe I could talk to you guys about it and see what you thought. If that was an option or if that's even available or, you know, start somewhere. And we are trying to find grant funding always. We're always looking for that. But I didn't know what you guys thought or how you thought we should do things, you know, up here, so.
Interesting. I think we give you 10,000, correct?
10,000, yeah. And a portion.
I thought that was for the homemaker program, chimney sweep.
The electrical bills, the support for electrical.
Electrical, right? Maybe, well, we used to do.
I think emergency funding is what, yeah, a portion of it. I think they said 80%, of it was for the emergency funding and then a portion of it was for the backpacks and then like a portion for food, which is emergency.
I assumed all of it was for the seniors. I didn't know there was a breakout.
There, it was broken out. So that's just kind of why I wanted to visit with you and make sure that we were, you know, on the same page as far as that goes and how you wanted it that way. But for a full time home care or homemaker, we're looking at $60,000 for a year. You know, and so the way we had broken it out, it was $3,100 for senior services. So that does help a little bit. So we're just trying to figure out how, how we go about trying to help the seniors up here in Valley County. Right now, we only have a part time person, but we're always looking to hire.
How many people are on the list? I think it's more problematic to me. I mean, when we, when we put something in the budget.
Yeah, right.
I've never heard that it was broken out, you know.
Yeah.
It was just 10,000. You guys go spend it in our community, whichever way you do that.
Okay. Okay.
That's the way it was too. And I don't, honestly, I don't know what you're talking about, the $100 more?
It's $100 more, what do you?
You said in the beginning, you said something about you got a little bit more this year from the county?
No, we got 10,000 from the county, from your, from here. But 3,100 is what we had divided it up for the seniors. But I just didn't know if that's how you wanted us to do it. But if you're okay with, like, this is the $10,000 you spend at how you see fit, how to make it work.
No, I'm not okay with that. I would rather go to the seniors and.
The whole 10,000?
Yes, and the chimney sweep program, because that was the most popular programs for many, many years up here.
There, yeah. So the chimney sweep program, those reimbursement requests come straight to the clerk's office for payment. We have a specific expense line for that. So I want to make sure that that is clear first.
Okay, that's what I thought.
If you can give me just, I would.
I thought you guys kind of ran that program.
Pardon?
Who runs the chimney sweep program?
So the YCAP is made aware of individuals that are in need of the program. They make the arrangements for the individual. Usually the chimney, they make contact with the actual chimney sweep program. They do the work and then the invoice is submitted directly to the county for reimbursement.
But that comes out of that 10,000?
No, it comes out of a specific expense line for chimney sweep.
That's not for that 10,000.
If you can just.
And I think our greater conversation needs to be, now that we have asked this group to relocate and they've gone mobile, they're no longer earning funding through the thrift store. And so that thrift store was also used in order to help support the community.
Right.
And so we have always given them 10,000. But what we're missing now is the income from the thrift store.
And I want to clarify, it's actually 20,000 that we give to YCAP.
Okay, 10,000, so far we've got 10,000, so it's twice.
Correct.
Okay.
And that was, that payment that you received was for actually fiscal year 2022. So for fiscal year 2023, you are scheduled to receive $20,000. Now, what needs to be identified is what I'm hearing is you're asking the Commissioners of how that money is to be expended.
Right, we want to make sure we're on the same page, that we're doing everything that, you know, you were expecting us to do as well. And so that we're doing the work that we need to be doing in Valley County. Because we appreciate all of the money that you give us. But we also know that the need is. But we also know that the need is big, and the need is way bigger than what we can do right now. And um, and so that's just that conversation that we wanted to have as well. So we know that the seniors, um the list, we have, how many is on our waiting list right now for Valley County right now? I'm like six, uh.
I like ten or so.
Ten, ten.
So, and that, that's problematic to me, because last year in fiscal year 2022, we did not have YCAP access our homemaker program or our expense line. We have a separate expense line for our homemaker program uh budgeted that the county makes contributions when we receive invoices from YCAP for that program.
And that's not in the 20,000, correct?
That is not in the 20,000.
That's the part I think is being confused, and that's why I wanted to clear it up, because they haven't billed out for that, because they weren't sure on what that looked like. So I want to make sure I'm clearing it up with our finance department, because we've been using the, utilizing our funds, CSBG money and some of the funds, but I wanted to make sure we were doing it appropriately. So what we do is, there's a separate expense line. What I'm hearing you say is that there's an ex a separate expense line, so we bill out for services for seniors.
Correct, for the homemaker program, if it's related to the homemaker program, yes ma'am.
Okay, and so is, can that be considered some wages as well?
Yes, that, that's, so in the past, Valley County, that has been the contribution or the expenses that were paid, or were the hourly wages for the homemaker individual that's going into the homes.
Gotcha, okay.
Unfortunately, it has been underutilized from what I can see.
Okay, because we've been used.
The chairman and the commissioners have expressed to YCAP in the past.
Yes.
Hey, we need this program to be more utilized in Valley County.
Right, and so the last year we have upped it, and we've, we've been servicing um more clients than we ever have.
That's great.
And so um, so do you know what the total is on that?
Thirty one hundred dollars.
Thirty one hundred. That's where the thirty one hundred dollars is. Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. Now that makes sense. We'll go back, we'll crunch numbers, but if um, but we know that thirty one hundred dollars will go quickly, you know, now that we can move that to that. Um, because it'll cost us, you know, it'll cost us to have a full-time person up here. Um, and then with the funding that Area Agency Three gives us, we just can't crunch it to where it it makes it worth having a senior program. So that's the part that is really hard. So maybe we could utilize some of the 20,000 as well.
That's what I'm asking.
What did we do with the 20,000 from last year?
What we do, what we do with that money is, we do, um, and I can get a report and meet, like, we can meet again, like in January. But what we do with that money is, when somebody needs a utility bill paid, and we're not, you know, we don't have our crisis money right at that moment, or somebody needs a hotel for something because they're homeless, or they're relocating, or um water, gas. I'm not sure, like, just emergency services, basically.
Rent, if I remember right.
Yeah, yeah, so anything specific that some of our funding doesn't pay for, we help, and we utilize it, and we use it. So um.
You know, Carrie, it seems to me like maybe what's happened years, because of the different business model you guys are doing, and you're not here physically, it might pay you to spend a little time with Doug on some of this stuff and meet and get together, and
Yeah.
And I would really like to see where the money went last year.
Absolutely.
And I don't mind getting together with you, but I think the commissioners truly need to be aware of that contribution that is made to YCAP.
Right.
There needs to be an explanation of how that money is being expended, that.
And you want to see a, a itemized report? Yeah, I can get that for you guys. It'd be great. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you for um your time, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're communicating and that we spend some time together, for sure.
Well, and I appreciate that, because we've kind of been separate for quite a while.
Yeah, it's been.
Which I think is catching up to us today.
Yeah.
But if you come in and, you know, we can see the budget, see where you're spending money, we realize that you need more funds, then we could talk about that then.
Okay, perfect. That would be great.
And Carrie.
Yeah.
I guess not to be, I apologize for being direct.
No, I appreciate it.
In the past have reduced this YCAP budget because of the lack of information that has been received from YCAP.
Okay.
At one time, point in time, the county made a contribution of 30,000 to YCAP uh to be utilized, but unfortunately, we were told that a portion of that money was being used for administrative costs at the pay ed office. And Valley County was like, mm, we aren't willing to make that type of contribution. The homemaker program has also been reduced from $5,000 to 3100 because of underutilization. So I think there is an opportunity for Valley County and YCAP to work together to make sure that we are in fact um utilizing these funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
The uh business model of Valley County as well as YCAP.
Okay, that sounds great.
I think it would be important to come in and let everyone know, first of all, what YCAP is, because I'm assuming, you know, we have a new commissioner coming on again. Ed's never been really introduced. Um, so the YCAP mission in our area.
Right.
But also, I mean, you guys provide housing in McCall. Most people don't understand that that comes through YCAP.
Right.
You run the Head Start programs in this area. Most people don't understand that. So we need a full, you know, recap.
Working on childcare.
Yes.
You know, um lots of, lots of things are happening, so I, yeah, what, what works? Like, what, what do you think about setting up a meeting? Is it like getting on the agenda for Monday and having that time?
Yep.
Okay.
I would recommend after January.
Yes, okay. And I'll bring the reports and all of that, and maybe spend some time with Mr. Miller too, as far as just the breakdown of things, if that's okay.
Okay, and then we can talk about maybe more.
Sounds to me like a suggestion to get together. Mr. Miller is the most important part of this right now.
Yeah, okay.
Because you got, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that you've got a plan, they go, we don't.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to come and kind of talk and talk through some things. Um, but that sounds great. We'll, we'll meet up in January, and I'll bring reports and um try to have some time with Mr. Miller, and then we'll go from there.
And maybe a recap too on how it's working with you guys being more mobile.
Yes.
You're currently using the Senior Center.
Yes.
Here, the one in McCall.
Yep.
Um, so you know, maybe just a full recap of, of how you're participating in Valley County.
Yeah, absolutely. That sounds great.
The other thing that I just think about, you know, is there's this other opportunities, there's other opportunities possibly for some financing, but um you're gonna have a, you're gonna have something more concrete than we just need a facility, or we.
Right.
You know, we need, you need to kind of.
Yeah.
If you're thinking about like ARPA or any of that other kind of stuff.
Right, yeah, because there's different, yeah, there's different kinds, and that's kind of why I wanted to just touch base today and see what the funding looked like and what the expectations were of that, so that we can be clear on it, so I can get the right reporting, and then we can move on from there. Because what I ultimately would love to see is us hiring, being able to hire another body for Valley County, if, if at all possible, to do some homemaker and community work um because of the needs that we see. So maybe we could talk about that in January too, just after we get all of this figured out, but I appreciate your time.
That works great. Very good, very good. Very appreciate that.
This seems to tie in just a little bit with the discussions we've been having here with our, the work center here and the future of that. You know.
The Senior Center.
The Senior Center, yeah, Community Center?
Yeah, yeah.
And before we go.
Yeah.
Could I get you to introduce your net, yourself? Come up to the mic and just so we can make sure.
Yeah, this is, this is Jonathan.
Yes, Jonathan Gonzalez, uh Community Services Specialist for YCAP.
Well, welcome, Jonathan. Hope to see you guys some more.
Yeah, he works out of our um, our warehouse in Canyon County. That, that's where we pump all the food out to all the counties. So he oversees our warehouse and all of our community action stuff that's going on.
Good, well, welcome you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Just give with Doug to get the meeting in January sometime, I will.
Okay, that sounds great.
Get into the, the weeds on it.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks for everything you guys have done, and thanks for all your support for YCAP.
Ed has a question.
Yeah, you had, talking about food and stuff, you connect, you connect with the food bank at all, or is this?
We do. I know Beth works with um the food bank really closely. Um, so if they ever need anything, or if they need extra stuff, we can always give it to them. You know, we can bring it up. Um, so I know that they do a big portion of that here. Um, so but the food bank in McCall, we work out of on Tuesdays um is part of, one of our mobile sites as well. And so, yeah, we're, we stay pretty in touch, but if there's ever a need of more food, we're, we're always happy to help support that.
Good, good.
Thank you. Sure, sure is right. You just, you need to.
Need to come and, I just don't know how much time you need, or how much time we have with you, because I was like, we have so much that.
Well, I would schedule an hour sometime in January.
Okay.
At least an hour, and then we can sit down and work through this, get her, get her nailed down.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and we'll come and we'll share what we do.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Thank you so much.
Drive safe. Hey, we got about five minutes until our next agenda item. This is a Firewise Project. Steph, and she's gonna be online. So whenever you get her up, we'll move on to that agenda, Doug.
YCAP's the other opportunity for housing.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you good. So we will go ahead and announce this agenda item. This is an action item. This is a Firewise Project 2023 Firewise Grant. Steph, I'll just turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. I hope each one of you were able to receive the handout that I had intended to hand to you. It is a list of a revision of some changes that we think are important for the 23 year. Uh, they're not necessarily significant. A, we just learned a couple of things. We had a successful year, and we had some innovative ideas and projects and some great outcomes, and so that just informed us about how we could just even do better for next year. And one of the things that we have really settled on as a team is that we would love to have a little bit of latitude. Instead of just saying, okay, well, this grants for 500 or for an individual, or this grants for 2,500 for a community, rather look at the project, and maybe it is not, 500 isn't necessary to accomplish the project, or maybe 1,000 would have a better uh result. And so the same way with the community grants, uh some of our grants did not spend the 2,500 because it wasn't what was required, and some of them could have used more money very effectively. So we, of course, would bring every one of our proposals and recommendations here to the commission, and you'd have a chance to take a peek at it and decide whether you think that that makes sense or not. Uh, it is possible that we would maybe end up granting a similar amount of money, but just in a, in a way that made better sense for each of the projects. Uh, the other big change that we would like to propose is that we, we didn't take into account large landowners that are adjacent to high-density um areas. And we have a couple of those uh that really could, they're not a community, and, and a small individual grant doesn't make as much sense, but they could have a great landscape impact on an adjacent community. And that, where we had, the, the example from this year is White Cloud. We did have um, we did have some work done in White Cloud, and we did have some work done in uh River Ranch. Or, excuse me, the one in River Ranch didn't even happen, because they couldn't get it together, but we have a landowner that has adjacent ground that's willing to do the work. And it would have been something if we had had the opportunity to spell out that project and have it benefit the adjacent housing. So it's sort of an additional criteria that we'd like to open up and offer to our community. The other thing is.
Let, let's answer a couple of these as we go, so. So what I'm hearing you say on the first request is that you want a pool of funds that you can disseminate as you see is important. So we put $50,000 into a GL. You guys uh invoice it as you see fit.
Well, the way that the program, essentially, but the way the program works is that we receive the grant proposals, we work through their viability, uh we come back in and we make a recommendation for the amount of the grant, and then it is up to the grant recipient to do all of the work themselves, and front all of the funding themselves. And then they present back to us with uh verification documentation that the money has been spent the way that they proposed it was going to be. And then we put through a reimbursement. So that's basically how it works, and certainly nothing wrong with having a, a line item on it at all. But the idea being that, you know, this year we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of 20,000. And so not that that would necessarily change unless we get some more takers, and I hope that we do. But that's how the process works. There's really not much risk that the project's not going to be completed.
And I guess that's what I'm saying, is we've got money in the budget, and I mean, it's
This.
You know, a line item of a hundred thousand dollars or whatever.
These grants are paid out of Title III.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Title III fund is just there.
Correct.
So there's really no limitations. I mean.
There's not, because we, during our budget hearing, we did propose that Title III funds could be utilized for these type of projects.
Even on federal lands?
These, these are all on private lands.
That's all private.
Yeah, but in Title III generally for federal land.
I guess I would be open to an amendment that they don't have to be $500 grants or $2,500 grants, as long as it fits with the Firewise.
About is that we, we take it all and spend it on one or two practices, even though it's a larger chunk of ground versus a whole bunch of $500 ones. I don't know if that's what we're trying to accomplish in my own little head here.
My next question is, with the larger grants, I mean, we, we get the large grants where we actually go out and do the fuels reduction. What is the difference? I mean, if you're out in Jug right now and you're doing fuel reduction mitigation, those are state funds. How is that different than what you're stating, the large grants that are uh contiguous with more of an urban setting?
Well, that's a really good question, so I can explain that a little bit. We do receive these larger grants in cooperation with IDL, and we do use them on private ownership and occasionally on state when it makes sense. And that's wonderful, but they're, they're tied to a geographic area. We don't have the latitude to work with a landowner that may be within the McCall community that could use some work that uh we, we think is judicial. And when I say larger, I'm, I'm talking about maybe 3,000 instead of 2,500. You know, we're not, we're not talking about 10 or 20,000 dollar grants. We're talking about keeping it in a small process, because it, to my way of thinking, in most cases, this is sort of a lost leader. This is a way for the community to start talking about Firewise. This is a way for neighborhoods to start gathering and getting their individuals motivated and out there and doing the work, sharing the process with their kids, uh just really talking about it. And uh this starts that conversation very effectively. It's also something that we've recommended for use for evacuation land within neighborhoods and streets. Um, it's rather open, not just to fuel reduction, but to other uses that are consistent with reducing wildfire in the area. So because we have this kind of latitude, and because we keep these very small, we just haven't had to run them through quite as rigorous a review, although I think that our Firewise group team is excellent. I think that they've asked very, very good questions and have decided where and when uh these projects have been approved. We don't approve every, we don't approve everyone. But we actually, we think we have a good landowner or community to work with. We sometimes reach out and help them redefine the project so that they can sort of get more of that bang for their buck and, and, and be successful. So they're just very different. Um, we have some very, very strong constraints with our IDL grants. They can be used exactly for this purpose of fuels reduction, for the most part. And it has to be used here in this way for this purpose. Whereas we were able to fund a new sign addressing system last year for Spring Mark, Spring Mountain and Aspen Ridge. Uh, we were able to take a homeowner's suggestion that they wanted to uh change their, their fuels around their home, and they went into a Firewise plan. We worked with the state Firewise coordinator down in, in Boise, and we got it set up to where it's actually a really cool outcome. And uh he's certainly willing and, of course, agrees to having his neighbors look at it, us look at it, tour at it. You know, those sort of things are coming out of having this kind of latitude to think about what really does make a difference in a community, and, and how does it pull together and cause individuals and communities to spend even more on Firewise. Because we do, we ended up leveraging almost $12,000 of additional uh monies that were spent last year beyond the, the grants that were given.
So I'm assuming, Steph, that we would still approve everything that comes through you guys to us, correct?
Every single one. And um I think, I noticed John sitting out in, in the, in the DL. He and I have been working very closely on this, and, and I know that he can add any, anything that I have forgotten. But what I can say is that we have uh tried to set up a really easy, flexible program. that hopefully will be done as much online this year as, as ever before because we did do a little online with some of our agreements last year. It worked great. But we're trying to keep it simple and accessible and we really wanna grow the program in the Donnelly Cascade area. And so this is just an outreach. You know, we keep saying, gosh, we can't get the message out. Well, having as many signs out as we did in communities that said, this is a Valley County Firewise project has probably been one of our more effective means of communicating. It's got a QR code. All you have to do is flip your camera about it. It brings you into contact with us. So that's kind of been the purpose. And what we'd like to do this year also is as we move along, perhaps once a month, say we do get applications that start pouring in. As we meet on a monthly basis, then we would come to you on a monthly basis and say, hey, this is what we have so far. We think these are judicious. Why don't you take a look at them and see if you agree? And then you would approve or not approve. You have the final say.
John, do you wanna add anything? Please come up to the mic.
Good morning.
Good morning. John, a little hug. Just add to what Steph was saying about this. I, I kinda look at this program as being an incentive. It's not, you know, the grant money is, is set for certain areas. This money is kinda set up as an incentive. It's not gonna cover the, the cost of the whole project as we've been finding out and stuff. It's, it's to get people interested in, in the program and, and maybe get more interest built up as we can go. And particularly some of these areas that we can't get to, like Steph said, with the, with the federal grants or the grants to the IDL, they're, they're set to certain areas. We can only work, or she can only work in those particular areas with that, that grant money. And, and there's a lot of area in this county that needs it. Help, we've talked.
Well, and I think honestly, excuse me for interrupting, but the big issue that I have is you gotta be, what is a mile and a half from Forest Service ground and that eliminates a lot of the Valley.
It does, it does.
And I know people on my end of the Valley have been really looking at this saying, hey, how do we get in on this because we need the help too?
And that's something that we've kinda, we've been struggling with, but I think with this program, as we kinda build it, that you're gonna see more, more of that interaction with the, with the other parts of the county that we can't touch.
I think you brought up a good point on this with mile and a half thing. I remember going, talking about that earlier and that seemed to be kind of a hang up. But do we have, can, if somebody goes to you guys and say, show us a map, where's a mile and a half line at? Do we have that? Is that on your website then?
That's, yeah, that's part of the.
Yeah, so that should answer a lot of questions for a lot of people. I mean, thinking about over on the west side of the lake, there's hardly anything, it seems to me, along there that wouldn't be in, within a mile and a half.
And that, again, that's, that's been covered with that West Mountain grant or I forget exactly what it's called, but that, you know, we do have, Steph has got the grants there in place for some of that work to be done over there. It's just, it's.
We just did an uncontrolled burn there. What are you talking about?
Well, there's still some stuff that's not burned there.
A lot of work that needs to be done over there.
Let me ask you Steph or John, I'm new to this, but how much money are you guys talking about on this? This program, the one where you don't have to be within a mile and a half? What are we looking at for seed money?
Well, I think that, that we are hoping to grant as much as we have for the past two years, which is in the 20,000 range. We can see where if we are more successful in including the underserved areas further south along Long Valley, it would be great if we could find a legitimate use for another 10 would be, to me, fantastic. To me, what's, what's important about this, and I know the mile and a half is something that's easy to focus on, but what happens is that when we have our other grants, say the one at Jug right now, those aren't, they're not a mile and a half. They were specifically written for that community. And so they have to be, the work has to be done within that line. So we don't have that variable line unless we come in and request for a change of venue. So what happens is you're right Commissioner Allen. Even the grant that we have over at West Houserd on the, on the west side of the lake, it doesn't reach up to Tamarack. It doesn't go that far, you know? So I mean, there's, there's just, there's opportunity for getting more money and within that mile and a half type of fuels project. But it does not, it doesn't get us across the reservoir. It doesn't get us down into the valley floor and it doesn't help communities, for example, on Cabarton Road that could so very much benefit from this type of, of project.
I am willing to entertain, you know, whatever is required in this situation. Our Firewise program needs to grow in the county. We need to become a regional Firewise project. I am more than willing to consider whatever funding mechanisms or needs there are, especially with these extra funds we have.
Everything that you guys have put together has been very successful and is a growing deal. And so that's what I'm thinking about is, you know, two or three years down the road, we're gonna have to double or triple that budget for that.
So that's what I think. Great, that's, that's what we're hoping to.
That's what we're hoping to do. That's the purpose.
Anyway, for what you're asking for today, it is an action item, but you wanna change your funding mechanism. That's basically the, what you started with here.
Not, not really, not change it, but.
Well, you wanna, you wanna make it a little bit more liberal, a little bit more flexible, if you will.
You wanna change the rules of application.
Somebody may need a couple hundred dollars and somebody may need five, right? I mean, so you, you don't wanna tie it into 500,000 or whatever.
Well, we're just asking for a little bit of latitude because as you're, you're correct, there's always been a couple that didn't need the full 500 and they'd struggle to spend it. And then there were some that qualified for the 500. They put another 1,500 in it. So it would have been nice to help them with a little bit of a match on that. We are gonna be asking specifically for match information this year. So we're gonna ask landowners and applicants to think about what they're gonna put into it because it doesn't always have to be hard cash. It can be sweat equity. It can be other work that they've accomplished, you know, that type of thing. But Commissioner Allen, this money has always for the last two years been used from the Title III funds. It's not been through, which the beauty of it is the latitude that we have. We're following, we're following very, very closely all of the requirements.
We're not about out, but it's within 100.
Well, yeah, it makes a lot of sense and I like the idea, I like your idea of being the flexibility you're trying to build into it to make it more, I guess, appropriate.
So we need to ask Doug to kinda see what we got at Title III and what we're gonna have to do two or three years from now.
So right now we have 235,000 commissioners, but if you are aware, you've authorized up to $100,000 to be utilized for the new outfitting, the recreation patrol positions. You have, so that's 135,000. There, we will get another SRS payment, which will include Title III funds. So based on the request that I'm hearing from Stephanie, there will be enough to allow for an increased contribution for this program if the commissioners so desire.
Do we put, do we make that part of this action is to make, to make that additional money available if needed?
I don't know that we need to. I mean, those funds are available. They haven't been well utilized. I mean, we were, we were up, we had $400,000 in there or something. And so we've used a port of those appropriately to, you know, create the, these other positions. But every year we get 100.
About 100,000 of SR, of Title III funding, yes.
It seems to me like what they're asking for us to do today is approve these new rules for, for application. That they sent with, and I, I think it's about number seven or eight is where it talks about giving more latitude for these guys to approve. Easy, not, not, parcel's close enough within the mile and a half that we, they can get away from that and go out into the valley floor. And that's exactly what we need. So that would be my feeling is we would approve those rules for application today.
Right.
That would be the motion.
Then, then we would come back after we get all of the applications. Just come back to you and say, here's what, here's what you get, what we got.
And you can say, this one applies for the federal grant. This one doesn't. We're gonna need Title III funds for this one because it doesn't apply. And, and I'm assuming that's how that would work.
Haven't had a chance to read all of this. We just got this, this morning, but knowing that, you know, after this conversation Steph, does this still cover what you guys are trying to accomplish? Do you want to expand upon this at all?
Well, this actually, really the, the only significant change is the application period has been opened earlier at February 1st. It extends to the same period of time. The idea that we might ask you to approve applications along the, the way of that, that application period if we feel that they could get a head start. And the other is that we're just asking for our team to have a little latitude to consider what makes sense for the project. And if it's an extremely large project, then that's when we start looking at a different grant source. The intent here is to stay quite small and to, to be able to hit these areas that we're not gonna get some of these large project grants into them. And knowing that we have the East McCall grant is coming up, so we know that that area is going to have an opportunity. But we also know that there might be something that isn't fuel reduction based that still makes really good sense for the neighborhood. And this allows us to consider that is what it boils down to. I feel like we haven't changed any of the authorization steps. You know, it starts by somebody coming up with an idea, going through a quick review, taking it to our fire working group team and then coming to you with a recommendation. So I think we have a number of steps that allow us to really catch if we're out of, out of bounds or we're not, we're not in some way meeting the, the goal of our project, which is to bring Firewise to our entire community.
Anyway, I think it's a good program. I think it's a good idea. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion if we approve this change, it's a requesting.
A second.
Can we move to a second? Before we vote on that, I just have one question on the bottom, the third bullet from the bottom. Proposals for Woody Debris Dumpsters are referred to as the BIDB Cost Share. Can you tell me what BIDB stands for Steph?
Yeah, I'm sorry Commissioners, that's Bring It, Don't Burn It.
Okay.
That is our annual program. We already have something in place where we do a cost share for bins into neighborhoods for communities to use that to get rid of their own woody debris. And so that's already a functioning program and it's actually kind of capacity, so.
I just had never heard that acronym before.
It took me a minute to figure it out too.
Yeah, and I'm not starting to figure it out. So we got a motion in a second to accept the new rules for application for the Woody Debris Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else?
Only that I want, I think it would be prudent to make certain that the motion does say the Valley County Firewise Grant Project because we do already have a Woody Debris Program that's in place. And so I would hate to have it misunderstood.
So Mr. Allen, will you amend your motion to state for the Firewise Program?
I will make that a motion, Mr. Chairman, a change to that motion. So it'd be the Firewise Program.
I'll second to that amendment.
Hey, we have a motion second on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you got that Doug?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, okay? Good luck.
Thank you.
See you warm.
All right.
All right, thanks John.
Bye bye.
So John, are you considering retirement at any time?
He can't.
I am retired.
He is. He's working, he's working for free now.
They're good on you, John.
Okay, do we have someone here from the Paint Avalanche Center?
We do.
You guys are here, okay? We're gonna move right on down our agenda a little early. Is there anybody else coming in?
Well, Dave Bingman was gonna show up and, and.
Okay, then we're gonna wait. Well, this is agenda for 10:15, so we'll, we'll mute now and come back in 10 minutes and open this one up and we'll wait for Dave.
Okay.
Okay.
Um Heather is an excellent trainer, but have the support of the actual forecasters from the Pead Avalanche Center is a big thing. Yeah. Let's see tuition lodging per diem it all comes together to twenty three thousand seven seventy eight fifty. It's pretty straightforward really. And Angela, do you have anything to add to that?
Hi, I'm Angela stop sixteen twenty four Davis Avenue. I don't have much to add other than just to really reinforce what he said. I'm not part of the motorized community, but I certainly appreciate all my friends who are. And not only do I benefit as a backcountry skier and someone who's worked at ski resorts and been a groomer and all that. But snowmobilers, people who use other forms to get out and enjoy the winter, they are really going to benefit from this. And I think sometimes they get left out in these discussions. We have we're in a mecca for snowmobiling. And I mean, I've got friends from all over the world who like to come here and ride. So it'd be great to be able to issue forecasts that are not just benefiting me, but them as well. And also the forecasters have been gracious enough to come and help me. Teach avalanche awareness classes and break down avalanche training, just basics. For groups of young women and youth, I volunteer also with the ski patrol. And it's just really great that they volunteer their time to come do this when they're already not making a lot of money. So they're just really giving back to the community in a great way and really helping all of us to manage our risk better. So thank you.
Thank you Angela. Um question for Dave. You guys make a forecast. How does that get out to everybody else in the county?
Okay, well, as I say, first of all, I'm no longer there, but having brought my experience in. The way that they go out, they collect the data usually like today they'll be out in the field and then tomorrow morning they get up at four thirty, five o'clock in the morning and they publish that on the website. It goes out on a national database and then circulates through social media. There's also a call in line that we can call into if you're so inclined, but you can imagine with the rise of social media that most of the inquiry and most of the use is coming through the internet rather than people actually using a landline.
Okay, we link this to something that we have on the county level?
Yeah, we have that on the recreation pages right now. Certainly it's it's out there in a lot of different places. I was just hoping for one quick moment to address Sherry's question. Sherry, just so you know, in the past, when that center was well staffed as well as well funded. Two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, we had rack funding that actually allowed for a third forecaster position on the forest. And we were able to do a lot more of the training with the forecast team. So part of that training was we worked with Valley County grooming department and did a training for them every year for the new groomers and for the old groomers coming back. Sort of a refresher and then also on sort of a case by case basis. We went out with the groomers and the deputies when they were going out to Deadwood. Through a really particularly impressive avalanche area with the groomers, just to make sure that conditions were okay for them to be out there on those days. So I think personally having two full time forecasters that the Forest Service is paying for now. That's gonna start the process rolling again to where we get the avalanche center built back up to where they can interface more with not only the county, but other groups in the area. So.
Go ahead. I just have two or three questions. I'm trying to sort this out just a little bit, but who who does this program primarily support in this area? Is it mostly motorized?
So you know, it started out as you know, really oriented towards backcountry skiers. Back in the nineties, ninety nine was when the Pead Avalanche Center was founded. But that was before snowmobile technology is where it is now. And so, you know, if you're paying attention, you drive through any of the towns in the area or stop at the gas stations, most of the users on the forest in the winter now are motorized users. So you know, I think our grooming program in the state is the second largest grooming program. And believe it or not, that's not why people come here to ride snowmobiles. They come here to ride off trail. So they're using the groom trails to get to places, but it's just, you know, the growth, especially in the last five to seven years has just been, you know, very, very large. So this is evolving into more and more of a motorized program.
Yeah, so I guess when with that question is wondering, what support do you get from that group directly as far as finding this program?
The State Snowmobile Association gives the Avalanche Center or the Friends some money every year. Clem, which is a one of the manufacturers for riding gear, helmets, apparel, things like that. They've supported the Avalanche Center with like five hundred dollars a year. And those are basically, you know, just I think Will's here as well from the Forest Service side to talk about the budget if you need him to, but those go straight back into the budget and help pay for like, you know, equipment maintenance. Website hosting up until just a couple of years ago, the Forest Service was paying for all the website stuff. Friends of the pit, yeah, the friends are now paying that annually and they paid for about a ten thousand dollar upgrade two years ago. So there's support, you know, there's also several grants that we've just become aware of that come from both Skidoo and Polaris. So.
Yeah, I guess the point I was getting is it seems like that we don't leave those industries out when it comes to this type of thing. And it sounds like you guys are a group of a business nonprofit support group. For this, in other words, you have the official forecasters in the for the Forest Service. And then now we want to add to that two or three more for at least two forecasters.
Well, they're two full time forecasters right now. Ideally, there'd be three. So Will's acting as the director for the Avalanche Center right now.
Okay.
And ideally, we would have a full time Avalanche Center Director as well. Which would be a part partially a field based position and an office based position.
I think this comes back to some of you, Mr. Trying to tie these in together some way to can make it make sense from a broad based county perspective.
Well, yeah, as I say, so the relationship with the Friends and Avalanche Centers across the country is, I don't know if you guys know, but there are sixteen Avalanche Centers in the U.S. They're funded primarily by the Forest Service. There's a couple of outliers that are private. But there are sixteen across the country that are funded by the Forest Service. And the Forest Service budget doesn't pay for those centers entirely. So like Richard Teton, which is over by Jackson Hole. Sawtooth Avalanche Center over in Sun Valley area. Those guys are funded for about a third to a half of their budget by the feds. And then their Friends Group picks up quite a large portion. So in the case of the Sawtooth, their Friends Group is raising about a hundred thousand dollars a year in donations. Sponsorships, one of the sponsor sponsorships that they've been able to get is snowmobiles for the forecasters to use for one or two seasons and then they go back to a dealership.
Yeah.
So the point I'm trying to make is that the Friends of the Pead Avalanche Center are doing a lot right now. There's a lot of room for them to keep growing, but they're taking steps to kind of help fund this. Where there's that shortfall from the Fed side.
Right. And then so what I just get kind of hopefully pull in the funds from all these different industry.
One of the others. Yeah, yeah, I'd say one of the other really interesting things is I think it was two years ago, the state of Idaho actually adopted some new legislation that allowed Idaho Department of Parks and Rec to collect two dollars off every sticker registration for snowmobile registrations in the state. That money is going to be available at some point this year. We don't know when they're set up as a grant program through Parks and Rec. So we know that that funding is going to be available at some point this year and we're hoping that we can hit that fund up for salaries or another snowmobile for the folks here. That's that money is going to be split six ways. And I think this year they have about sixty thousand dollars in that account. So that's not a big, big pot of money just yet.
Another question, it seemed like this, I don't know, I was just wondering why this wouldn't fall under basically search and rescue.
Different entities, you know, yeah, I was gonna say Jim might be more versed in that, but again, you're talking about a federal group that's supported by a nonprofit. And they are mandated by the Forest Service to go out and collect public safety information. So it'd be an interesting, that'd be an interesting rewrite of kind of the way that we're doing business.
Maybe another layer here that I don't know the charter of the search and rescue. I just.
Well, and I was gonna say in the past, the Avalanche Center does work very closely with search and rescue. Whenever we have an avalanche incident or fatality, if it comes to that. Forecasters are part of the quick response team and they also are mandated through their funding with the feds to go out and collect data on the accident or the incident and determine like what, what was the cause and how can we avoid that in the future?
One last question from me. It's just non how does a nonprofit cover themselves for liability? You go out and you do forecasts and somebody gets, you know, ends up under a avalanche that day. What happens?
So they're not, they're not, they're not actually providing the forecast. They're supporting the two Forest Service forecasters to go out. So the federal government is providing the liability insurance for that.
Yeah. So the insurance problem stays with the federal government.
This, in the case of the snowmobiles, the snowmobiles will be insured and registered to the nonprofit. And what that really does is that allows the nonprofit to sell that equipment before it becomes unusable. The Forest Service can't excise their equipment on a regular basis easily. So the snowmobiles that are currently in the Forest Service fleet are between seven and thousand, ten thousand miles. One of them's a two thousand ten with ten thousand miles on it. Usable snowmobile.
Internal problems.
Is about thirty five hundred miles. So yeah, so this is a way for them to support the Forest Service. And continue to turn those snowmobiles over before they're.
Well, thanks. That's a solid question. One more question, I don't know who to ask you, maybe Jim, have you already picked out the two people that are going to go to this school?
Yeah.
Sure, they're they're they are our current forecasters, George Holcomb and Kevin Studley. Yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that are actually working now for the Forest Service.
Yes, yeah, and they are the ones providing our daily forecast. Right. And they're the ones that have all these mans put on them. Yes.
I think they can. I'm sorry, ISSW being in Bend this upcoming, sorry, being in Bend this upcoming year is really fantastic opportunity. It's basically our neighbor. Otherwise, this would be much more expensive of an endeavor.
Perfect. And we have the two recreation deputies now. And that's what I'm thinking is, you know, just trying to collaborate with them, come back, train them. Search and rescue training. So.
Yeah, in the past, our forecasters have worked with Valley County Search and Rescue. Valley County Search and Rescue, the kind of training we've done for avalanche response has been basically looking for bodies like, you know, because of the way avalanches work, if you don't get to the person in the first ten fifteen minutes, they're probably dead. And so, but if we have a recovery where someone doesn't have a beacon, they're out there somewhere. Then what search and rescue trains for is thirty people in a big line with probe poles and working that if you can imagine it's it's a different kind of response than the quick response that the victims colleagues can do and actually save that victim's life. Right? So we do train for that in search and rescue. And like I said, we're now going to have a special team of people who can do kind of quick response. But by the time search and rescue gets there, usually it's a body recovery.
Right.
And now that we're using these Title III funds a little bit more actively, I would recommend that during budget hearing, budget time that you're actually working, you know, maybe with Dave or whoever collaboratively here at the county to try and identify needs for that year. So that as we get in our hundred thousand a year, we know who's going to be requesting this type of funding.
Commissioner Maupin, I appreciate you bringing that up because this was not presented during our budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty three for the use of Title III funds. So I do think what we need to do, if the commissioners are inclined to comply with the Title III requirements. We would have to have a separate public hearing this year for this request. And I would propose that we do that December twenty seventh. But it, based on my interpretation of the Title III requirements, since this was not proposed during the county's budget presentation. This would require a separate public hearing for the general public to be able to come in and provide any testimony to the commissioners.
We understand that.
I think.
I would propose December twenty seventh, I can get it into the paper today. One o'clock for December twenty seventh is what I would like to propose for a public hearing.
That's perfect.
Yeah, and the reason why we.
For rack grants too.
Sure.
Those are changing again.
The reason why we didn't do that is because this opportunity to get a great deal on a new snowmobile and blah, 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 just wasn't there at the time. And it's been presented to us later.
Are you on a time deadline for that?
Just deposit. Yeah, yeah, we gave them the deposit on the machine already. So, yeah, no.
If this is an action item, we need to move on. We're out of time. But what's your pleasure? Say, I think we should, our action should be then to have official action on this December twenty seventh. And with a full on public hearing and resolve it.
And I'd second that.
So your motion is to go ahead and have the public hearing on December twenty seventh for this very application.
Yes, sir.
Understanding. Yep, and you second it.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and second to go ahead and move this forward. All those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. And please come back on the twenty seventh, the one. Okay, thanks you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move right along today. Our next agenda item is the West Central Mountain Fiber Network presentation. And I'm not sure who's doing this, but come on up, introduce yourself to the mic, please, for the record.
Brains are in the room.
Well, you guys didn't take any chances on being late, did you?
Chris just wants to come see what we do all day.
Right.
Realize we have nothing on our agenda ever.
Get enough driving this weekend, so I figured it would be fun to drive down today.
Okay. But I appreciate the chance to speak with commissioners this morning very much. Broadband's been on the agenda for the leadership in the county for good eighteen months, probably more. I know Sherry's been working on it quite a while.
You need to give us your name and town that you live in.
So Bruce Patterson, I actually live in Ammon, Idaho. Do you want my street address?
Nope.
Okay, I live in Ammon, Idaho. I work for Entry Point Networks now. I spent seventeen years at the city of Ammon, helping them build a city owned fiber optic system.
Ammon, down southeast.
Southeast Idaho.
Southeast Idaho. So did my time there as a municipal employee for for seventeen years and decided in June of twenty one to go private sector primarily because of the amount of public funding that was going to flow towards broadband to try and help other entities across the country work on that. We're currently under contract with over fifty counties and cities across the country, helping them figure out combinations between ARPA dollars, state capital fund dollars, federal dollars that'll start to flow and help them figure out projects. Most, most of the time, just a little bit of history about Entry Point. We're more of a match for a city or a county that wants to build the infrastructure, but does not want to be an ISP. That's kind of the area that we work in. So we've been fortunate to work with your team here. It's a broad team. Sherry meets with us most every two weeks and Chris with McCall and we have other mayors that are there here that engage every two weeks as well. So I think the purpose is really just to try and give some information about what's been done and where are we at right now and what are we going to try and do next? So that's really it. And I've really just got some slides that more help me. And I would really like to approach this more as a conversation than me just talking about. So I will try and pause and make sure that the things we're talking about makes sense. So let's go ahead and go. Double click it. So this is kind of the the way I laid it out. We're going to talk about a little bit of history. Then I'm going to talk about industry research, meaning work that the group has done to gather information from the incumbent providers that provide broadband in Valley County area today. And I tend to use Valley County a lot, but we're really talking about the West Central Mountains area and we want to be very inclusive. So I'll do my best to pay attention to that. And then we have some consumer research. We're going to talk about the challenges that exist here. The opportunities that lay in front of all of us to do something and then the recommended next step. So let's go ahead and go to the next one.
You just have to make sure your arrow is within the page itself. You're just kind of off to the side. Move your arrow so you can actually see it.
Sorry.
No worries.
In twenty twenty one, there for probably one of the first times, there was money made available to public entities to try and address some of their own broadband situations. And that really came about because of the pandemic. There were ARPA dollars, coronavirus capital funds. The federal government came out with a program called the Broadband Benefit Program. And that was a subsidy through the FCC for people that couldn't afford their home connectivity, but needed to do school or work from home. They could get seventy five dollars a month reimbursed. That's been converted to what they call the ACP program, which stands for the Affordable Connectivity Program. That's up to thirty dollar reimbursement. So if your, your kids get subsidized school lunches, you can actually go on the FCC website and they give you more or less, think of it this way, like a coupon code. That says you qualify and then you can choose any ISP that has an ACP package and go and basically get that thirty dollars off of your bill. And if the bill is less than thirty dollars, it'll pay it in full. If it's, you know, fifty or sixty dollars, then of course it takes that thirty dollars off. So and what was really recognized by a lot of these public entities, cities and counties, is that they needed a lot of data. They needed a lot of information. I think we all recognize that that it's become essential. The pandemic really accelerated that process where people said, I've got to have better connectivity. It needs to work for me. It needs to be on all the time. And a lot of the public entities really started to focus on trying to quantify what is the need? And that legitimately is still an ongoing effort, trying to quantify what really is the need that people have. And a lot of the public entities as well were trying to find collaborative solutions, meaning they want to be very respectful of the industry that exists in their area and the investments they've made and try and find ways to work together. So in in twenty twenty two, Valley County took on some leadership and tried to investigate what could be done. One of the things that became clear is that this needed to be a broader effort. So it wasn't just Valley County and it's not just McCall, but it's it's everybody within. And so the West Central Mountain Fiber Network was created. It's a joint powers agreement. I'm going to pause for just a minute and make sure commissioners, you understand what a joint powers agreement is?
Ed was not here then.
Okay, so.
Yeah, go ahead and explain it.
Joint Powers Agreement is an agreement that public entities can enter into. It could include your school district and includes your political subdivisions in the counties around you. Basically, what it says is you all create an organization that has its own board. You can set it up with its own board to govern it. In this case, it does. It's represented on the board. Each of the underlying entities have some representation on the board to make decisions. That entity gets its authority to do things from the underlying members, meaning in Valley County where you wanted to do some kind of work. You would rely on Valley County's authority to potentially get a grant project, build that grant project, so forth. So it's relying on the authority of the underlying entities, but it allows you to create an overarching umbrella so that you can pursue a single goal together and set rates and things like that together that are universal across each of the entities. So that was the reason it was created.
Is that like a five oh one C three type of an organization or?
At this point, it doesn't exist quite that formally. It really legitimately is an agreement. Now you can create an entity and Sherry, you would have to step in because your, your legal counsel participated in evaluating what was the best step, I believe.
I believe that we want to create an entity that encompasses the project itself. My understanding.
Depends on the next steps. You know, the next part of that project is going to determine what our focus is for the future. Right now, we just need to have a level set conversation where each one of the communities agree to participate. And Brian wrote this for us with in conjunction with McCall's attorney. So it all has legal recourse, legal action. And it's just all of us signing on together that we are participating in a conversation jointly for our region.
I think the goal was to give, to give it a formality so that the communities had a single point of focus toward this solution.
Right. And I think part of it too is you want a single, so I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. Whatever investments get made, whatever they look like, public, private, or whatever, it's going to result in something. And the question becomes who owns it, who manages it within the various territorial boundaries? So the idea here was to create a holistic approach because frankly, you all need each other. The challenge you've got is the rural nature and how distributed you are. So the solution is going to need to bring parties all to the table. So I'm gonna, I'm not going to go into detail because there's more on that a little bit later in the presentation. So in twenty twenty two, we were very focused on design cost, meaning we have to figure out what the size of the elephant is. We know that it's a big elephant. We know that we need to spend money on upgrading infrastructure. What you have is not sufficient, but the question was, how much is it going to cost? So we engaged in a design that's actually a small screenshot. You actually have a full blown design of a fiber optic line to each and every address. It's a little over sixteen thousand addresses, almost seventeen thousand addresses endpoints between businesses and residential, your schools, all of your addresses to cover that. And so we did do a design so that we could figure out how many feed a conduit, how many feed a cable, how many pieces of electronics so that we could get an overall view. The top, go ahead.
One of the parts of that, this is when we did the RFP and the only response we got was Zipley. And so before we did this design cost and took it further ourselves, we said, what would the ISPs in this area be willing to provide? And that's when they came back and said, you give us three million, or no, we'll put in three million, you give us twenty million and we will upgrade sixty six hundred connections with, it was upgrading all their copper. So before we actually did it further, we wanted to see what would it take for the ISPs here to do it? Well, in our design, we figured out there's sixteen thousand connection points, not sixty six hundred. They were only willing to upgrade where they currently serve basically and nothing new. I just wanted to throw that in there, make sure we got that.
Spirit in what you pursued and you needed and what were.
And that's why we went into the next phase of this.
Bruce, just a question because I've got a couple of good friends that are really techy kind of guys. And they have talked to Zipley about what they call an office. Which is basically a panel like out in my area, it's the end of Creek Creek Road, there's a panel where everything's brought into one spot. And Zipley has said over and over, if they had enough money to update those panels, we wouldn't have a broadband issue. Although I'm still on copper. Most of the people out there are still on copper, but.
Right. I think the thing that I would encourage the commissioners to focus on, if it's public money, how are you going to keep that in public interest and not let it turn into a de facto corporate subsidy? So that, what I'm, what I'm trying to say to you is that's not, that's a solution that is feasible. The question is how far will it go and where will the rest of the money come from? And then who controls the final price to the consumer? And those are all the things that we've got to keep track of as we talk about this, this type of solution. So what Sherry said is exactly right. We did put out our RFP and the RFP was specific to can we get a path to Boise with two fiber or ten gigs so that we can bring more services into the county? We did not get one single compliant response. That was a year ago. The one response we did get was from Zipley and they basically said exactly that. So you have to understand what they're said by that response is, we will not bring any additional competitors into your area, period, even though we have the ability to do so. But we will take your money and we'll upgrade our existing infrastructure to the existing customers that is not extending it to any new ones. Okay? So in twenty twenty two, I'm going to skip through this. Twenty twenty three, what we're going to focus on is we're, we need to to challenge some industry data that's out there and I'll explain why. And we also need to execute on some opportunities that are right in front of the county. So. You love it.
You should just. It's right at the O two access.
So, so the thing that I would say to you is the industry and Sherry can speak to this. She's been to the meetings in Boise. Chris has been to the meeting meetings in Boise. The industry is largely going to say the job is done. They will look at Valley County area, the West Central Mountains, and they will say the job is largely done. Here's the facts right now on the maps that they publish. The satellite companies say they can cover ninety nine percent of your area. The wireless says, and this is by the way, five G fixed wireless, not your cell phone. We're talking about you putting an antenna on your home. They're saying eighty six percent of your area is completely covered. Zipley with DSL says they have ninety one percent of every address covered. Zipley with DSL says they have ninety-one percent of every address covered. Cable, which is Sparklight, says they have forty-seven percent covered. So you have to think through in your head how you feel about those numbers. But the challenge is the industry is telling the government, the job is done. We just need ten percent or some little portion to finish up the last little bit. And so there is a lot of pressure on the federal government and on the states to give these companies money, a lot. It doesn't normally trickle through you, it's gone on for decades.
And when we say fully covered, that's called twenty-five over three. So twenty-five megabit download, three up. And in today's world, I have at my home through cable, mine is about sixty down, twenty up, and I freeze on Zoom calls. So in order to get twenty-five down, three up, that is absolutely slow and so basic and not pointed toward the technology of the future at all. But that's what the FCC required as a minimum standard. I've spent two years learning this stuff.
Well, you know, I hear, I hear a deal, well, we can't just give the private companies this request of ten percent or whatever and go away really happy. We've got to do something else.
Correct. And the thing is, is that in industry, you get to control your cost point. So Zipley right now is selling, you know, a hundred over, you know, twenty-five probably out there for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Satellite link, you spend money upfront for your equipment, and that's about a hundred dollars a month. There's families out there that can't afford that. And they control the cost. So if we were to take and say, simply, we'll go out and bond and we'll give you your twenty million dollars, you go fix our sixty-six hundred units, we'd lose all control. They could come back and say, well, we've upgraded your service, we want a hundred and fifty dollars a month. And we're only going to give you thirty over five because that meets FCC standards. So we lose all control.
So we're trying to figure out some way to incorporate cities and counties into kind of a cooperative kind of a framework that may be on some of this network stuff.
Well, and it's not even, yes, AMN did it. Where Bruce's background is, is AMN has a private system. They have, what they did was they created the infrastructure, the underlying infrastructure. And then they sell that to an ISP, Internet Service Provider, ISP. And that ISP actually makes their money by the monthly income that they get from selling it to a home. So it's a partnership. And that infrastructure is provided by federal grant funding.
But it stays in the community and it's managed. Okay. Yeah, it's a little bit because, you know, traditionally you'd say, well, these businesses like Zipley, you know, they're out there to provide these services. And they would step up to the demand. What I guess I'm hearing is that maybe they're not stepping up in rural areas.
There's, there's not a private business model without some assistance that they can make work. In the metro areas, there's plenty of competition prices lower.
Density's there, you can go to an apartment building versus, you know, one acre parcels.
And that's what I'm trying to get to.
Can't run that of cost effect.
It's a difference being rural in nature of central Idaho and on AMN. So to have their own ownership of something.
At Boise probably is fully.
Yeah, reasonably good. I mean, Boise itself is probably suffers from a little bit of a lack of competition. And the problem is, is you've got what we would call facilities competition, which means the cable company's wire competes with the phone company's wire, which means if you divide those customers half and half, let's just say for sake of business model, we divide them, which means you serve every other home. You've actually got to support two completely separate infrastructures for what the customer sees as exactly the same service. And so you're actually driving cost up when we do facilities competition. So part of the reason why we find a lot of the public entities want to enter it is we can build one road and FedEx and UPS can all use that same road. Now, if you tend to give that money to an incumbent that's already in the area, you're basically giving them a monopoly. And you need to remember the internet is not regulated. So the final price, even when it's simply, they set. And this has been proven, there are actual studies you can see where AT&amp;T and others that you would think are regulated phone companies charge four times in an area where they have no competition, they'll charge four times the number than when you go into an LA or a really dense populated area where they're forced to compete. Okay?
And in my opinion, if the government gives these ISPs their funding, then they are creating the winners and losers in the marketplace. This company just got twenty-five million dollars, they don't have to spend of their own profit. So that might force a smaller entity competition out of business because these guys got all of the federal money, these guys got none. You know, how do you, how do you equate that in a business model? You're picking the winners and losers in the community.
Part of what I think I really want to touch on before I leave this is ninety-one percent, if you ask Zipley today, they're showing this on the map for the West Central Valley Mountains that ninety-one percent have access to theirs. And you can get twenty-five, three or greater. Every piece of research we've done shows, number one, that number is too high. Number two, they don't deliver those speeds. So there's issues with that. But if we don't get the maps to reflect that, you can't obtain the federal dollars. So that's a barrier to getting funding.
And when they say your speed, it's up to that speed. You don't have to deliver.
Part of the issue is the industry is focused on protecting themselves from what they call overbuild. We would normally look at an overbuild and we'd say, well, that's a good thing because that's competition. It means the market's good. That's not what's happening here. They're focused on saying, if I'm already there, you can't get any money to overbuild me, regardless of whether or not it actually works. So they're really only obligated at this point to prove that it could, could do twenty-five, three, and that's what it's fully capable of. But in most instances, they're not actually delivering that.
And they only have to show for the full-time residents here. So every weekend, every big weekend, when everybody shows up to their homes, they, they don't account for that.
Right.
So we have to overbuild for the influx of people that come. And that's why our phones don't work and our computers don't work. Every single time we get a large influx of individuals.
Couple of things to keep in mind. Valley County, actually, your providers, your incumbents are Zipley, who took over from Frontier, and Sparklight, which is of course Cable One rebranded. Now, if you look at their base package pricing, they are not at the top, okay? There are a lot of companies that start their base packages higher. But what is happening is everything they market is for speeds up to. Challenge is you're very rural, so the gaps in between your service locations are fairly far. The copper that's in the ground is very old, and with age, it doesn't function as well. So what's happening is you're paying quite a bit, but when we actually measure what actually gets delivered, you're paying a lot, even though the pricing doesn't look so bad. And they call that tier flattening. So that's a term that you're going to see in Consumer Reports, Pew Research, they'll call it tier flattening. That means that when we measure how much actually arrives at your home, you're paying actually a lot, even though your rate doesn't look so bad. So let's see if we can go to the next. So this, this is market research. So this came from your community, you might recall, we ran an online survey. So these are the results right here. One hundred percent of your businesses and residents, one hundred percent said speed was important or very important. So we give them those standard five questions, right? So they fall into that top category, a hundred percent said speed. So that tells us right there, they're all struggling with getting the capacity. They need to do the things they're trying to do. Ninety-five percent that said that cost was important or very important. So again, these are from your own surveys. That's a very, very high number, tells us that they are not happy with the value of what they feel like they're getting. Ninety percent said that choice was very important and indicated that they don't have choices. So many of them feel very locked to, and I think you would agree with this. I think if you talk to residents, they're going to say, if they have access to Sparklight, depending on the weekend and depending on the time of the year, it's probably not too bad. But nobody else really has a workable solution, generally speaking, including those that are on DSL because the speeds just aren't adequate to do the things they're trying to do. That's what your survey data indicates in general. Now, I'm giving you in general. Ninety-three percent of those surveyed said that they would be interested in a public solution that aligns well with right now, Consumer Reports probably has the best, from my position, has one of the best surveys. They show that three in four Americans support the idea that broadband solutions should be treated as a utility like streets and water and sewer. So that's part of what we have to remember is the internet was always a luxury. We would have never built two infrastructures for it. We would have never done that. But because it came along after phone and cable, and now these two systems can compete, and then we added wireless, everybody's competing and they all have different investments, different infrastructures, and we're trying to be fair to everybody. That's part of the challenge that the public sector has is how do we be respectful to the investments the industry has made? So what I would recommend to Valley County, and I think that's where this group is at, is what we've got to do is we've got to start put leadership into it, leadership towards the problem and a strategy so that the industry can see what the county wants to do and what the residents want to do, so that the investments now can be combined, public and private, into the right solution. That would be ideal, but it's going to take leadership, it's going to take community engagement. So I don't think there's a bunch there that I need to dive into. But the one thing I would say is that, I'll just point out to you that within the opportunities that are out there, they are not funding solutions that won't do at least a hundred meg symmetrical, meaning up and down is equal. It's a hundred meg. So they are not funding old DSL solutions or upgrade. They are not funding cable plant, can't do that. Basically, you're going to fund fiber optic. The reason they've done that is because fiber optic is what they want to see, primarily because this is public money, they want a thirty to fifty-year investment. Twisted pair copper is not that investment, coax is not that investment, and also wireless is not that investment. So the general feeling come out of the federal government and most of the states, including Idaho, is make it a better long-term investment. Don't kick the can down the road. If this is generational money, let's make a generational investment. Okay? So the challenges that are going to be faced in your area is the capital cost to build it. That's number one, and I would say that's eighty percent of the problem right there. If you could get the capital to connect the homes, you can solve the biggest piece of your problem. Part of what I mentioned to you is, so we mentioned the design and Sherri saw the price. So at the high end, we're talking a hundred and thirty million dollars to connect all those addresses. It's a lot of money, but somebody's going to do it. I'm going to say that again, somebody's going to do it sometime. The question is when, and the next question is who's going to own it? So we are working on the design to try and push that number down, and we know we can get at least ten percent, probably twenty percent down. We may be able to get it even a little better than that. And there might be some areas where we can do some inventive things with technology to make it even better. So that's where we're at with the design. There are a lot of programs available to get that capital. In fact, all the programs that are available to you are for capital investment in an infrastructure. You can't use it to subsidize service. You can't take a bucket of money and say, you can use this to pay your Sparklight bill. There isn't any money that the government's making available to cities and counties to do that. They have their own programs, but they won't give it to you to run those programs. So what they really want you to do is look at your community and figure out what's the need, figure out a project, and there are rewards if you have private partners. They do score well in the grant applications, in the program applications, okay? So capital's number one, operations I would say is number two. Facilities-based competition drives up cost and reduces the scale, I mentioned that. That's really part of the problem is Zipley and Sparklight are actually competing for the same denser geographic areas. They're not getting out because they're so focused on trying to win this war that's right here along the highway, when really what you need them to do is get out here, and it's going to be really, really hard to get them out. And then services are limited because there's a lot of legacy infrastructure, meaning it's either coax for the cable company or it's DSL for the phone company. Those aren't true digital, those are all analog technologies, they're very limited in their capacity. So it's part of the challenge is, is we can't take Zipley and put them on Sparklight's infrastructure and expect it to work right. It's too much. We can't take Sparklight and put it on, so we need to build one fiber optic, and then those two could share it, and they would actually be able to beat the delivery of their services that they're doing on their own infrastructure. Okay, so let's talk about the opportunities. The federal dollars, there's bead money available, that's the one where there's a map. There's a map that shows that served, and that's part of what we're talking with some of your GIS team about trying to get some data. There's data that the state has helped to stand up a speed test service. That data is usable, is crowdsourced data in terms of what the actual speeds were. So we'll need to get into that mapping, Sherri, and we'll need to look at that. The other thing is, is you can look at your right-of-way and permit requests, and you can kind of try and determine, does this carrier actually have infrastructure down this road edge? Because if they don't, they can't be serving these addresses. We have to find some data to say, is that ninety-one percent served on the part of Zipley accurate? If it is, we can't get some of this money. So we need to, we need to figure that out.
Bruce, isn't that kind of proprietary information, though?
It is, and they hold it really close to their chest. But that's why the federal government said, you can basically go back and use requests for right-of-way access and easements and things like that. You can use that as a basis to challenge them saying they're there.
I think say whatever they want, it's how do you prove it? That's the problem we're having.
And if you, if you challenge the addresses, all the FCC does is they contact the carrier, which would be Zipley or Sparklight, depending on what you're challenging, and they have to reach out to you and reconcile this. If they can't reconcile it, the challenge will stand as long as the Idaho Broadband Office agrees with your challenge. There are also state funds for the coronavirus capital funds, and the state stood up a broadband office, and there are also some programs you can get some planning assistance, meaning they'll pay for you to go out and kind of get a design and a business model built and make some recommendations. If it's actually intended to get you to the point, you can apply for the grant money. So that's part of the big problem is these grant programs are reimbursements. Those are both reimbursements. And you have to have a shovel-ready project and a business model to actually apply because you actually have to be able to map it, say this is what it's going to cost, this is how much it's going to cost to give the service. That's a lot of work, so you can get some money. The good news is that's really the work we've done over the last year, year and a half. So we have some ideas around cost. We think we know where we'd like to go with the business model, but that's something we need to come to the community and to you folks with and say, this is what we think, and start to talk, have those conversations. So that's the next steps for us. I don't know if Chris and Sherri would agree with that.
Oh, I would totally agree. I mean, that's, that's where we're very uniquely positioned at this point in that we have already built a lot of the, a lot of the, we've already done a lot of the groundwork. We know, we think we know to the best of our abilities what we need to do, what our next steps are. Moving forward with, and applying for these, to get that, to get that way. To have a, I don't know that there's another community in the state right now that's as well-prepared as we.
No, there is not, there is not. I mean, LaTo County's in the mix, and there's some counties up on the north side that are in the mix. But I think number one, you got a couple of partnerships that we'll talk about, but the thing that we committed to do was to come in and help you come up with a plan so that it's shovel-ready. Number one, we committed that we'll put the skin in the game upfront to make sure that whatever the application is, we can get engineered stamped drawings, that we can help you with the business model without cost to you. The other thing we committed to, talking about entry point, is that we will bring a funder. So if it is a reimbursement, we will bring a funder, a private entity who will carry the load through the construction loan process with the idea that as it gets paid back, it'll get paid back. The second thing that needs to happen is that money's only, you know, you can only use it on the addresses that are eligible. So there is going to be addresses down the highway that we can't get federal money for. So we've got to figure out a private funded model, that capital gets recovered and paid back. So we've got to figure out a private funded model that capital gets recovered and paid back. We, we believe very firmly that public bond process is the right way to do that. And there are different ways to do it. The reason why we believe that is because the capital recovery is 20 years or so instead of 10 years. And that changes the number that they're going to pay.
Bruce, if a private guy like me said, hey, I want to replace my copper line, half mile of line to the nearest fiber optics, can I get reimbursed?
Under the current models, no. They will take your money. And they may or may not be able to do it. But under the current models, no. But in the models that we are talking about, the answer is yes. And we would intend for that to add value to your property, meaning that you would actually have property values increased because of the broadband that you have access to.
Question too, and this may be kind of off the wall, but we have this connection coming across Idaho now. High-speed connection, I guess. I'm not sure what they call it. But does that, does that affect us here in this program at all? Or that, is that a?
We don't have high-speed connection. Elon Musk satellite.
Well, whatever that, they're talking all the way down Highway 9 from start at Greensville.
That's what we're proposing.
That's, or, yes.
That's, that's part of this proposal. And the next thing that we're going to approve is a letter of support.
Because I thought that was just a trunk line. This is.
So that's called the middle mile.
Yeah.
And that's what our next steps are, is supporting the request. Iron is that nonprofit. It's Idaho Rural Optical Network. It's a nonprofit. And they're the ones that are working with the group from the north in order to create middle mile. Middle mile is, if you equate it, it's the highway.
That's what I would.
Yeah. So the middle mile is really what, in my opinion, the government should be funding. We want to create those highways, pathways throughout the country. The last mile goes to the home.
Yeah, the only real highway you have that comes into Valley County is Zipley's. It's all been built and, you know, it was, it was built the first time with public money. Because it was a regulated system, but it was for voice and it got built. It's now being used for a system that is not regulated. And they control the final price on the service. There are some provisions in there where they have to open it up to certain carriers that were leveraged in years past. But think about this. Most of the regulation's been pulled off. So if you think about it, you might remember that back in about 2014, when it was CenturyLink and they took over for Quest, they said, we can't compete. The cable companies are killing us and they're killing us because we have to go out on Saturday and Sunday and fix it because it's a phone line. And so the state government said, that's fine, we'll alleviate that. You have four days to go fix any, any outage. So that's one example. In the times when they alleviated all that regulation, they alleviated all the mandates that they have to serve. They alleviated all the mandates about pricing. So if it's internet, they have no obligation to connect everybody. If it's internet, there's no control over the final price the resident pays or the business pays. That's important to remember. Even though that money was initially public money that built it. So when you're talking about that line, you're talking about that will eventually is supposed to go from Moscow to Boise and come through this area. That is a new infrastructure and it is a public-private partnership. Iron is just in the mix because they can convene everybody. They, they can convene everybody and bring the private side together and the public side. So they're really just trying to bring everybody to the table and get the grant from the state to do that. If we can do that, their commitment is they will work with the county and the cities along the route and identify city and county-owned properties where they will put refresh locations. We're probably talking about huts rather than cabinets, but it could be either or. Where there'll be electronics to refresh that signal. And you can think about that as an on-off ramp for the interstate. That's the place where you'll be able to access that and get service providers from other locations. But to show you how bad this is, most of the traffic in the state leaves the state to go between north and south because the state doesn't own a route. So this would be the first time we actually have a north to south route inside the state footprint. And if you look at why that is the case, it's because it's different incumbent providers through the region. And none of them are willing to share and kind of create that path. So if the state would step in, create that path and make everybody share it, then we can build that. And it's very, very similar to what we're talking with you about, which is be the convener. You can bring a bucket of money, make the private bring the match. Maintain enough control and ownership to make sure you can enable competition on that infrastructure. And if that infrastructure gets built using public money, make sure it stays in the public control.
So is this going to get fought pretty hard by industry?
It is already fought very, very hard by industry. And that's something we have to get. That is something you will have to get comfortable with. I did not run for office for reasons that I don't want that job. But I do think that it's important that the messaging is a lot simpler than it used to be. It used to be very complicated because it was private sector business and government shouldn't be in it. Those things are true. But I think it applies more to the service than it does to the infrastructure. And that's how the public feels. The public in general feels that if we're going to take public money and build something like a sewer or water system, in this case, we're talking fiber optic, they would like to make sure that maintains or stays in public control and that the private sector has access to it. And there are ways to do that. It just requires some forethought.
So Bruce, I'm assuming the middle mile, all this stuff from Moscow to Boise would be basically owned by the state or by some public entity?
So a lot of this is not openly disclosed right now because as soon as you openly disclose a lot of details, it's subject to a lot of lobbying. But I will tell you, there will be a private line and a public line right next to each other in the same path. And the one that you would be using will be the public one and it will be the same one that has 911 services and other services like that on it. And that line will be operated by Iron. The other line will be owned and operated by private industry. And this is where it gets really interesting. Iron has created this arrangement where only 30% of the actual cost will actually come from public money. 70% is actually coming from the private partners that are going to own the other line.
But it creates a 30 to 50-year window of investment instead of, I mean, Zipley has put a few million dollars into Valley County in the last few years, but nothing that is sustainable to improve infrastructure in this area. And the amount of misleading information that was just delivered to the FCC tells you their intent. They have no intent of fully servicing us and actually bringing the product up to speed that needs to happen. No one is going to invest $100 million in Valley County in order to improve our network here. We're going to have to do it with a greater vision because private industry is not going to do that for us. It's just not a feasible plan. They can't get back that investment on what's out there right now. And then upgrading the cabinets that they're talking to you about, you're still on copper. Copper is an old, old technology and is not going to improve.
Good news is the bead money that I just mentioned, which is the broadband equity and
access.
Yeah, something. Yeah, sorry. But it's, it's the federal program. The good news for that is that the states have to oversee the implementation of that. And they have to spend it at the unserved first, which means they have to spend it on addresses that don't have 25 free. So that can't go to Boise, it can't go to Idaho Falls, it can't go to Moscow. It has to go into the rurals before it can go anyplace else. We know that the minimum the state's going to get is at least $500 million. We think it's more to the tune of a billion dollars. So even though we start talking about 100 million, certainly there'll be that money. Now, here's the thing. Who has a shovel-ready project that can make that application? Those are your competitors, but there is money in the bucket to cover this.
We need to wind down. We're way over time. What's the next step?
I would have, so the next step is on the middle mile, support the Iron thing, which means pass that letter. The next thing is we'll continue to work on the design and come back to you and give you more detailed information about opportunities as they come. But we want you to know we're still out here working on this. And community outreach is going to be a big piece. So don't be surprised if there aren't some upgrades to websites and things to try and keep, get your community more involved, okay?
I think that's a big sell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, would you be able to email me that presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
So the letter we received should be in our packets. And there's the group that's out of Leittuck County that is actually working on the middle mile. And we are all collaborating together and encouraging the project because that will be our middle mile feed from basically Fort Clarita Star. And that's really critical for us.
I was reading that deal. It sounds like it actually, at the ending, it's Star, it's going to enhance the valley.
And in our project, there was a project summary on the north-south middle mile network. And I am very much in support of this. If you're ready for.
Yeah, I'm just reading the letter now. Should have read it sooner, but.
So, so what we're saying is we, basically we're probably being asked to support this officially from the county level. It's project Iron.
This is the support letter. It's called the Idaho's North-South Middle Mile Network.
Yeah.
This is the one opportunity that the state has in order to create a north-south route that actually stays within the state of Idaho and helps.
So it's pretty important that this group, that we support that.
Absolutely, it is.
Yeah.
The collaborative, the collaborative work that's happening in the state, I mean, the state's broadband group is stating, we are going to look more favorably upon regional efforts instead of individual efforts. So the more regional we can go with this thing, the higher chance that we have of getting funding in order to help support.
And the route actually comes through Meadows Valley and then goes through Valley County.
Down Highway 55. Sorry, I didn't know more about this earlier, but that's been really.
It's taken me two years. The acronym's alone.
Just like an LFO, one bite at a time and this is the next bite. But I think this is going to be a long-term process.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then this is an action item, so I would entertain a motion for that letter of support.
I would move that we support the Idaho's North-South Middle Mile Network with their requested letter.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to support the middle mile network letter of support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm assuming Doug, we can print this out with some line signature stuff on the bottom?
I'm wondering if they actually.
For all three or? Not quite sure. This style here, there's no signature or anything on it. What do you recommend?
Yeah. It's got to be, got to be in by the 15th. Doug, can we put on the next agenda for approval of an actual letter? And I will make sure that we have that in hand.
Absolutely.
So for next week, I will put on an actual letter on the agenda.
Okay.
You can forward that just directly to Christine.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Thank you very much for the update. I've got to be honest with you, a lot of this is way over my head.
No, it's not. It's not. You can do this. It's simpler than sewer or water and it's way simpler than power. There's a lot of municipal power. A photon never killed anybody, but an electron will, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can do this.
Well, I'm more interested to see if we have the information of where the fiber optics have already been installed.
Posted.
So I think Jeff may have some of that, I don't know.
Well, the, the providers install fiber optic in their transport portion of the network. It's getting the fiber optic to the houses that they don't do. This proposes to take fiber to your house. Your house.
You can get a thousand over a thousand. That's what AMN has for 1990, no, 995 a month. A thousand over a thousand.
And service is very, very inexpensive. The thing that costs the money is the capital cost to build it. So if we can apply, if we can apply public financing, grant to it, we can get you there.
It's like they did with the highways 75 years ago, 80 years ago. Same idea.
Anyway, it's been very informative and did a good job, Bruce. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate your kind attention.
Okay. All right, well.
Thank you for coming on, person. Appreciate it a lot.
We're going to move on, we're kind of running behind here.
Thanks, Judy.
Our next agenda item is also an action item. This is decision discussion on plowing Crown Point Parkway from Highway 55 to the bottom of the hill. Jeff, I guess you're up.
Let me see if I keep my brain lined out here. So the two applicants are right here, Nick and Emily.
And I will say that's actually incorrect. It's not Crown Point through 55. It's 55.
It's from 55 to the bottom of the hill.
To the depth, to the very bottom.
Not, not the entire lake.
Right.
And what's the slope of that road?
Eight, probably.
Eight percent?
Yeah. Most of you, so, so I gave this to Oki to review. We've been working pretty diligently on getting all of our county roads under, it's the right word, Brian? Under the right permit, licensed contractors, license, all this other stuff. So these, these two bought a chunk of property two years ago, I believe, in that bottom. Have no way to get to it in the winter type. Last year, correct me if I'm wrong, they had permission from the person on top of Crown Point, which is about a half mile off the highway, third of a mile. They were snowshoeing down to their house. This year.
Their house down there? There's an active one?
No.
It's a camper.
It's a camper, yes. Yes. So this year, they're wanting to plow the road from Highway 55 down to the bottom of that hill.
They want to plow it. They don't want us to plow it?
They want to plow it.
So we, we'd end up with a kind of an agreement similar to we did over in West Mountain that gives them the right to do that.
Well, we would have to, but it's, I have a few safety concerns. ITD could not make it, Brian. Tried getting ahold of him, they're about as busy as we are. There's the angle, the dangle of Crown Point Parkway hitting the highway. What are we doing? The snowbanks get high. Brian Oki went and looked at it. He's got kind of the same type of concerns. Like I told Nick the other day when I talked to him, it's the people with the vacation rental in that part of Crown Point, they're going to follow their Google and they're going to, they're going to end up in that hole and they can't get back out.
Who owns that underlying property? Is that Forest Service? Does that road go over?
State of Idaho.
State, IDL?
IDL.
IDL.
So it sounds like there's an issue of entering Highway 55. That is a safety.
It's, it's pretty bad in the summertime to kind of, you know, you got to kind of pull up there. If you don't pull it at 90, you really got to train your neck to look. I haven't talked to Nick to see how, what his plans are on how he's going to plow it. He's going to be backing out on the highway or what he's going to be doing. I invited them here to put in their two cents worth. That's kind of where I am.
So Nick, what have you got to plow with?
A 250.
Oh, a pickup?
With chains.
And then a front plow on the front?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember that access off the highway. It seemed to me like there was a little bit of ground to the south of this. If they plowed that, would give them some more room to turn and.
And, yeah, that's exactly, I'll be honest, like, I am plowing it right now. And that's what I've been doing is like I go in and push that, clear that, so I have room to turn around.
And he's not on 55 at all.
I'm able to like come up, angle it towards like away from the highway and blade it in that way.
So you, so you're saying you don't come into Highway 55 at all to go right to plow?
No, I don't have to, no. Yeah, because I can come up parallel with 55 and blade it over, blade it over. And then once that's kind of blended over, I can hit it straight on. And obviously you need a place to.
So Jeff. Yeah, that's the thing up here is you run out of spots for snow. And then when it turns to concrete, nothing's going to move it.
Right, and that's why I'm. Right, and that's why I'm, uh, as of right now, I'm being very cognizant of that and pushing it over the hill. So it's like, I mean, it's like avalanche slope.
So Jeff, if we came in with signage on that road that it's not a public access, or I don't know what, to keep people from driving down in there, because what happens if somebody does and then they're stuck, how are you going to get them out?
So I will say we have a Honda Civic.
First of all, we need to have you at the microphone when it's time to talk, because that's, nobody can, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So I have Honda Civic and two-wheel drive and I just came out with it, so it's like, one of those things that you can get in with a two-wheel drive car, uh, and out, so.
So where's, where's the legal access? I mean, is this a legal easement across that IDL ground?
We have, we have a prescriptive easement across there.
Okay, for how much of it? I mean, Crown Point comes through their property, is that?
Pretty much all the way up to where Hanson, Hanson and Crown Point meet, that goes into private property.
Up on the ridge, kind of.
No, it's, still there's a, there's a Y intersection. So the right, the right Crown Point Parkway takes off and as that goes across your property?
Yeah, we actually own half the road. So.
So Turesco, you're a, you're Turesco?
And Nelson.
And Nelson, got it.
So.
We're living in sin.
Into typical prescription.
Not questioning it, I just want to make sure about the right property.
Where they own the center line on the south side of the road. People on the north side, the property I think comes off of Hanson, they own the center line. It, we've got a fifty-foot prescriptive through there.
Okay. And years ago, we talked to some previous owners about, instead of diving that road down into that to take it more level and coming around.
You're going to take it to the pass.
We would trade easements, give them the ground, whatever we had to do to make that work, and they weren't interested in doing that.
All that property sold.
So if you, if, looking ahead at this, Jeff, I mean, it belongs to ITD, or, uh, no, I mean, state of Idaho. So can that access to Highway fifty-five be improved, so it sounds to me like the issue is getting on, off Highway fifty-five.
The only way we proved that was we discussed it years ago, well, three or four, there was a gentleman up there, he, he was getting the funds from all the homeowners.
Build a platform?
The original road came off of that white spot north of Crown Point where Osprey.
Ridge, sure.
Osprey something takes off, it was going to take off there and contour out across the hill and tie in right about where Hanson hits. And get rid of that dip.
Right.
Because that was the original plat, it never got built.
Is there still an easement there?
Nope, it's all private property and all those lots sold.
Well, and I think when we talked about doing it kind of a level road, it came back and it's actually up the highway quite a ways, is where it was going to come in to the highway, so it was a square or ninety-degree entrance.
The white spot right there, ITD keeps it plowed out, and that's where it was going to take off.
But I think, you know, if these guys are wanting to plow it and do it, I don't have any issue with it, I'm more concerned about if people get down in there and can't get out, I don't know whose problem that's going to be, I guess theirs.
And I, just to clarify, you asked about signage, there is a current sign there that says no county maintenance from this.
Travel at your own.
Travel at your own risk, it's already there, right when you pull off the highway.
Okay, so the signage is there, a, and at the top, but we're not plowing the top at all.
But the deal is, that doesn't keep people, I mean, they, they recognize it as being a public access, it doesn't keep them from going down there. The deal is, is if you're not familiar with it, you don't know what you're getting into.
If I could fix stupid, I'd be a millionaire.
Yeah.
We're here to help and make sure stupid doesn't happen up front, if we can.
We had a big issue up there last, last fall I think, or two falls ago. There were still people driving all the way through, even though there was snow, people were still going through, turned slick. Matt Hall, they're going to H and H out here, came into my office, got to close that road. Because he's up there pulling people out, while he's pulling people out, there's cars sliding down the hill hitting him.
That's what I'm worried.
Him and going over the edge and the sheriff's office called me and asked me to put barricades up, which I did.
If we leave it open, it does need to be, it sounds like it needs to be marked, uh, no public access. You know, at least temporary.
Dead end or something, but that's the problem, right now, you've got fresh snow. And in February, March, April, you're going to get sun on it, it's going to be an ice rink.
Right, and that's what, what we, what we would like to see is like, we would even buy a road closed, you know, the angle that says from you guys or whoever, ANC, whatever the correct road signage is, to go where you're actually going up the hill, like, where we're plowing is actually below the county road grade, um, meant maximum. So it's below what the county could maintain per the maximum grade. Um, so if we put a sign where it does increase as it starts to ascend up Crown Point, a road closed sign right there, that would be, and then, and then at the top as well, just totally.
Down the bottom there.
Close it, you know, the one that, there is no closed sign at the top, there is no closed sign at the bottom. So two closed signs, just so that people know, that entire length of road from Crown Point Summit Parkway to where we're plowing, that section is closed. And honestly, like, as you know, I'm a recreation guy, like, obviously we don't want random people taking advantage of the state land, but.
Rainbow.
Now, now there is access to that public land, don't tell anybody.
But the thing, it seemed to me like the real issue is creating a hot, uh, hazard on Highway fifty-five. That's what a sixty mi, sixty-five mile or? Sixty-five, coming down that hill. And coming in at a tough, tough entry. And if you get someone in there trying to get out on a snowy day, you get somebody killed there. You know, somebody, somebody has some liability.
Right, have you seen the, uh, see, I'll tell you what, like, the mess they have up at Osprey Ridge is.
But it's not on Highway fifty-five.
Yes, it is.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it, they have a huge turnaround there though, I mean, that's, that, it's not even comparable to what your turnaround.
Honestly, it's fairly comparable to what I'm pushing.
I just came by there, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hadn't maintained it, I just got out this morning, yeah. If you go by now, we can take a video. I'll take a go out with the, on the Civic.
Jeff, tell me of the rest of Crown Point Parkway coming through there, so these guys are wanting it because they're right there on the highway. I mean, when that road is closed, how does everybody else drain? They got to go all the way through the subdivision, or where does it?
There's no place for us to park up at the top, though.
The plow has to turn around right there in that one spot.
There is no access for us up at the top, the only access for us is at the bottom.
So Jeff.
I, I guess I, hold on one second, I don't know top and bottom. So when you're coming in to your property from, uh, the subdivision side, okay? So if you're driving in from Sunrise or Crown Point Parkway the other direction, do you have access to your property?
No.
Because?
Because the county stops at the top of what's called Crown Point Summit, that's where they stop plowing. And there's signage there that says you can't park on the road because the plow has to turn around there. Um, and that's where they turn around and go all the way back through the neighborhood. So there's nowhere to park.
Can that be overcome, Jeff?
Safely.
What?
Can that be overcome?
No.
No.
There's no room for it?
There's no room, it's, it's maybe twenty-four feet wide right there. The last residence at the top has a huge six-foot tall fence around this property. I mean, it, it's, it's tough to turn a loader around. There's times where I've had to run a road grader up there and it, trying to get that thing turned around.
That's a nightmare, I don't, I don't understand why we ever started plowing this whole subdivision.
So from that top, what they're calling Crown Point Parkway Summit.
Summit, yeah.
The top before it drops down to the highway, that section from the top down to where they want to park or plow to is steep. It's probably twelve percent, probably in a few spots in there.
Not a winter road.
And it's a fallaway too, so we actually had people trespass on our property when they crashed their vehicles. And we don't want that, so that's why we don't want that entire road plowed either.
You just want to come in from the highway side?
Yeah.
So technically, the last four, five lots at the end of that road has no winter access at all?
Off of Hanson, that's what you're talking about, you see Hanson Road on there?
Five, yeah, five lots.
And all those people need a place to park, you can have winter access with a pair of snowshoes or a snowmobile, but you need a place to park. And that's the only feasible place to have access.
But Jeff, when you talk to the ITD, how do they feel about this?
They're the same thing, just the safety aspect of pulling out on the road.
Yeah, Hanson, so we don't do Hanson at all, correct? We stop at Crown Point, like for Hanson.
Anyway.
I. The feeling is this, I don't know, I, I don't know who sold you the property, they should have told you there was no winter access.
Yeah, they actually took the signs down, like, they left them all up.
Definitely not sold.
Yeah, they, they left the signs up this whole summer, so I don't know if there was somebody in cahoots or whatever, but they left no county maintained road all up this winter, but when we bought it, they were taken down.
Or, or they had not been installed yet, one of the two.
One of the two, yeah.
We usually pull those down in the spring, but.
They weren't taken down this year.
They retire and trying to get the new guy trained, we left most of those up, and it says no, no county.
Maintenance in winter.
I don't like reading between the lines, but.
The problem is, is that we create hazardous situations in this, county doesn't not, county doesn't maintain a lot of roads in the wintertime. You guys have purchased something that, in order to get out of it, in the wintertime, you're going to create a hazard. And I have a real concern with that, we got to quit approving things that create hazards.
Here's a thought on this one, what's, don't that kind, doesn't the state have a two-hundred-foot right-of-way through there like most other places, Jeff? The state?
Oh, ITD, I have no idea what they have through there.
I mean, it seems like if it do have a hundred, a two-hundred-foot right-of-way, you'd have, you have enough room there to create, you know, a, a flat, parallel entrance to Highway fifty-five. But that, that's probably not going to happen this fall, but it just seems like that's got to be the eventual solution.
If you make the flat bigger, then your, your, uh, your grade's going to be steeper.
Oh, to it, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, that's going to do us.
So the highway falls off pretty bad there, yeah.
If you made a flat spot, it's just going to steepen your pitch even more.
Well, that's true.
Are you talking flat spot up on top where the road is?
Yeah, where the road is, in other words.
He's not talking on the.
Yeah, if you entered a road, basically you can make it relatively safe if you drive up and you have a decent entry to the highway.
A right turn lane or?
So, so good.
He's not going to provide that.
Getting there is the problem, it's going to make their road steeper or our road steeper, you know? Uh, but.
I, the problem I have is if we were creating something where we're improving it for the subdivision, that's one thing. If we're doing this for one lot, and that's what I'm hearing, it's one lot.
No, all of our neighbors that purchased five lots up there are interested in your own access, so.
So you're not only going to have you using that access, we're going to have five more people using that access.
Not necessarily, but.
That's what you just said.
Well, it's a potential.
They want to, they want to.
So, yeah, we went through this three, four years ago and we couldn't find a solution other than trying to move the road. And at the homeowner's expense, even looked at coming down off Crown Port at the top from basically east to west back down into this hole and doing that, have you thought about doing that?
So we actually want to get an easement through the state land to our property, um, so, but that's just for our property. And, and obviously there's an easement application on your guys' website, whi, which we will be taking advantage of. But that's just to access our property, so we're not actually driving on Crown Point Parkway. Because we do own through the state land, so all we need is a hundred-foot easement. That takes care of our property, that doesn't take care of anybody else's.
So how are you guys accessing it, you're plowing the road and coming in out the highway, correct? But you have an alternative, if you plowed out down towards the bottom, so you had someplace to park your rig off Crown Point?
Yeah, we're not parking on Crown Point.
No.
There's, uh, kind of a pretty decent sized little parking lot right there at the bottom, you'd probably fit six or, six cars in there probably. Yeah, I bet you can fit, I'm plowing it wide because you need a place to push the snow, so you probably. You have four vehicles down there.
I think we need more research work on this, ITD will not issue a permit, is that correct? I mean, you're.
It's a county road.
Yeah, it's a county permit.
Can we? Brian, is there any way we could issue them a permit and then re, make we show our liability if somebody does pull down there in a motorhome and gets stuck, or somebody pulls out on the highway and gets hit? I mean, just because we allow them to plow that, doesn't necessarily mean we get, assume that liability, correct?
All the permit requires liability insurance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, I will remind the applicants if they are not aware, that they are required to have general liability insurance in order for that permit to be issued, that liability insurance is to cover negligence on the part of them. Historically, this has not been a plowed road because of safety concerns. We're opening that up, uh, I'm not going to tell you that we don't share in some of that responsibility with whatever decision you make here.
So Nick, you understand that, that if we did issue the permit, you'd have to get a separate liability policy?
Right, yeah.
The one on your home is not going to cover it.
I just had a question, before he was stating that they've had issues, I guess, last year with somebody getting stuck in an accident, where, who covered that liability last year?
It was, it wasn't coming onto the highway, it was everybody's own automobile insurance covered it, is what I, is what I understood.
And so that's what we would, I, we'll carry the insurance policy. And maybe we'll, we'll have a contractor, because obviously I'm not a contractor.
So, I'm going to ask another question here, Jeff, and I, this might be an opportunity for the county. I hate to see us personally be involved in that particular situation because of maintaining a road to a bad situation. And what about if we, uh, consider this to, uh, not having any kind of, uh, county maintenance on that road? Why, why do we do it if we're, like in the wintertime, we only do the top? So why don't we abandon that from a county standpoint? And then that puts a pressure where it belongs, with the state highway and then, uh, and the owners in that area.
Yeah, public access.
Yeah.
I'd rather that road be returned back to my, our ownership and our neighbor's ownership, it should not be a county road, we own that road.
Cindy, wasn't that part of a, a subdivision though at one time?
That's the, the only other access through into all those lots up there.
No, you can access it from the lakeside.
Well, they, they access it in the wintertime from a, from the backside, right?
From the dam.
Yeah.
So basically everyone.
It should be private from the top back, yeah.
Basically, everyone uses it and benefits from it in the summer, who are closer to fifty-five, but then in the winter.
Yeah.
Everyone doesn't, yeah, they won't, it's because they don't benefit, no one worries about it.
I'll make it a toll road all summer long.
It's because it's a safety issue.
We've had a lot of.
It's a safety issue in the summertime.
Because they, they bought out towards the end on the roads, uh, some of those farther out roads. With health reasons, they, they can't get to the hospital if they have issues in the winter time, because you're, you're thirty minutes from the top of the hill to the dam in the wintertime.
So the best option I would say is return that road back to private ownership, us landowners. And we'll put a gate at the top, we'll put a gate at the bottom and it's keyed access. You guys have no more responsibility. That's the best option, privatize it.
I'm not ready to make this decision, I need more time.
Well, I, I agree, probably is best to do a little more research on it. But I think those options ought to be thrown out there, because it's not, this problem not going to go away. We're going to have it as long as that road's there. And that entrance to Highway fifty-five there is just not good.
Correct, that's what I would like to research, what are our options, and ITD's not just going to let us mess around in there right of way.
Well, one of the other issues that we have is he's been plowing this road already without a permit.
Yeah, if it was back.
We're already in violation, Cindy, you want to say something?
Yeah, you might want to bring IDL in on the conversation, because it's their property.
Yeah.
I think that was the issue, I remember from three or four years ago, that they said, no, we want that road in case we need to log it.
no, we want that road in case we need to log it.
They could have, they could have administrative use on it.
They can have. They could have administrative use, they have that all over the country.
A logging road, that's what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, summer access only.
Yeah.
So you guys, we're running out of time, you wanna postpone this decision? What do you wanna do? I'd, I'd personally like for at least to come back with Department of Lands and I T D, just to kinda see if there's any kind of reasonable resolutions.
200 feet off the side, probably almost to where we're plowing.
No, I don't think it's 200 feet up, but it's only.
Is it 200 feet? It's probably 100 foot.
That's 100 foot there, if I had to guess, maybe up at the double, there might be 200-foot easement there, but down there, it's probably gonna be 100. For I T D.
And if you look at the, the actual lines on the map, I don't know if the lines are correct or not, so it's, the center line is, is not in the center of that easement, so it's offset.
Which, which side is it off on? So if we ask Nick to go to I T D and to go to Department of Lands and come back with a letter saying they don't have an issue with them plowing this road in the wintertime, we would probably be okay then? I'm asking.
That's, that's why I came in front of you guys, just to make sure we're covering on the county side where that's easement. I don't have a problem with the plowing, there were just those few safety concerns that kind of been sitting in my head.
Yeah.
I mean, even in the summertime, it's a.
Well, and I would assume if you're gonna continue to plow it, which is not up to our standards, you're gonna have to figure out a way to keep people from driving down in there in the wintertime.
This is a favor, do you guys have an extra road closed barricade that I could borrow?
We put the barricades up a couple of years ago, we've got the big class threes that.
Yeah, just barricade except when they come and go, and then the deal is, is the liability that the county assumes when you say, yes, you can plow to Highway 55, and it's a bad entry.
Well, and the concern I have is, I think that you are plowing in I T D's right-of-way. I don't think you have the right to do that. That's why I'm asking if I T D has been notified, because all.
Easement on it, though.
But Nick's broadening your easement, so how wide's that easement?
Yeah, it's.
And we, we can't, that's what I wanna research. What is our easement, what are easement rights? If you look at where, you know, if he's pushing, he's, he's totally in the highway, because this is the steep part, but once you, you don't even hit a flat spot, you're in I T D's easement when you hit a flat spot at all.
I mean, when you come out onto the road, you are on a flat spot, and that is part of the easement.
But you're plowing in the right-of-way for I T D, that's not allowed.
That, no.
Well.
That's where, I'm plowing the road.
That's why I want more time to research it, Nick, because I do believe you are.
There may be a need, there may be a need for an access easement from I T D, but I don't know, I figure it's, it's an issue that probably.
There was, there was a fatal accident in the summertime because the I D T has not put, closed off the, the passing lane. When you're pulling out in the summertime, you have to look left and right because you're having traffic pass, because you're gonna hit them head-on, even if you have the right-of-way. So this isn't even just a wintertime issue, this is a summertime.
Agreed, agreed, and you're gonna make it worse in winter conditions.
Actually, it's better because you're probably more risk averse in the wintertime than the summer, and people are traveling at slower speeds.
I disagree with your point.
Well. We need to set, we need to set some goals for him to do in order to get this permit through. That's what we've gotta do now. If he can't get permission from I T D or from the state to abandon, for us to abandon that road, then, then he's gonna have to look at coming off Crown Point, up off the summit, and a different way into it. That's the only option we got. Same thing.
That would just be more dangerous, it's absolutely more dangerous.
It's more steep.
That's why we don't plow.
It's 12% versus.
Well, the thing is, we're not talking about plowing down there, right? I mean, you'd be, you'd just have like a.
There is no, there's no.
Mobile access up to your car or something like that.
You can't park your car on the road, there's no parking signs.
That's why we need to work on that somehow, see if.
We have, we have this same issue throughout the county, it's not just you guys, and that's the problem, is once we, once we make a decision, we have to look at the entire holistic decision and how that impacts everybody in Valley County.
And historically, everybody's ignored Jeff's opportunities.
No, that's not true.
Yes, it is.
Well, that's your opinion.
Bill, Bill, um, Bill Rupp ignored your, has ignored your, um, uh, request to have a permit to plow down this starflower, um, and, uh.
What about that one?
Bill Rupp.
Well, we probably didn't know.
So that is the standard.
Okay, we're, we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop right here. These guys wanna wait, we want you to do some research, Nick, and get back with Jeff, see what you come up with, and then come back in front of us, and we'll talk about it again. I think one of the things we need to do is go look at how much flat property is right up where this comes up on the highway there. I think that's. Safe entry in Highway 55.
And whether you have the ability, that's where you need to talk to I T D, do you have the ability to plow within their right-of-way? They need to identify for us where that is, because on the G I, the GPS map, all that flat is in the I T D's right-of-way.
Oh, where, where these guys are pushing the snow down, oh, I was trying to picture where the flat was, yeah, okay. So my question right now is, what do we do for right now?
Well, hopefully you'll get this done here in the next day or two, and come back in and talk to you, and if, if it looks like everybody's okay with what he's doing, then come back in next week and we'll make a final decision.
Thank you for your time.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good enough. Okay. So I'm gonna write postponed on that.
I've got some contacts I'll give you when we get out of here.
Your next agenda item is also a, an actual item, this is a public hearing for a private road declaration validation for Collier Ridge. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I'm assuming there's no applicant. Cindy, it's just you?
It's just me.
And at this time, we will turn it over to you and go from there.
So the staff report for a private road validation, just to name the name, Collier Ridge Road. It's on an existing shared driveway, and it was originally platted as a 30-foot access easement. So there, there's a, you want me to get it up on the?
I can't read that plat at all. I could not read that plat at all, it didn't look like it was.
It's in between Collier Peak and, and which other road?
But I can't, I can't read on that, if that was a road easement or if it's utility easement.
An access easement.
Or an access easement, still doesn't clarify that, though, for me.
Ingress, egress, when you in and out, driving access.
It didn't, well, an access easement can also be for utility purposes, so I was, I was looking at it going, I don't know what legally these people had, and I couldn't tell on the plat exactly what it was called.
So you got Collier's Peak here, and you've got Hilltop here, and this road is in the middle.
But all of these lots have access on Hilltop and the other?
Yes.
And this appeared to.
Not realistically, though.
But that appeared to. That appeared to me.
So you're gonna make the whole thing private, or not private, yeah, private road? Do you can, look here, you can see it go on right through here.
Look at the old plat, is that really a road? You think it is?
Should be. It's on, blowing.
Is that, your H D at my cord's not plugged in, Cindy? The cord that's to your, on your left hand there?
Get into this basket. Where's that?
Right on the tabletop, there you go.
There's a hole right here.
Usually you gotta have it, it's upside down. And the reason I question it is it dead ends. I mean, it's just, it's just this little tiny section of road that's being called out, and to me, that just, it so looks like just a utility easement. Because there's two full roads on both sides of it, Cindy, why would they put an easement in the backside of lots? It doesn't make any sense to me on a plat. I mean, not that this subdivision made any sense in the first place, but.
I. I. 30-foot access easement goes from Hilltop all the way through. The access includes ingress egress.
Okay, so that I can read on that plat. Put that back up, please, a little bit. Nope, the other way. Okay, so there, where it dead ends, stop where it dead ends, there I can see 30-foot access easement. But is that a road? I mean, is that, because you got roads on both sides that were specifically called out as roads? So people have built a road over this access easement, is that what I'm hearing? It's already in place?
Is that along, is that, is that along the ridge up there, that road, or is it on the slope?
Along the ridge or on the, this road right here where these lots come up off, it's too steep to build a driveway for some of them, so they have used this, and they were actually given a shared driveway variance at some point. In this area. The whole point behind this road validation is the gentleman. That's where it's, and, I'm sorry, let me say one more thing about that. If it was just a utility easement, and specifically a utility easement here, is probably what it said, 30-foot utility easement. Typically, you don't need 30 feet for a utility.
No, so.
Typical plat, however, that utility easement would outline every single one of those lots, so this predated, you know, where your utility easements on every one of those lots.
So these are the utility easements here. Going into this adjacent property. So that you can get utilities over to this adjacent property. You can get through.
So, so you're saying this one down the center there is a utility at 30-foot?
It's access easement.
It's an access?
30-foot access easement.
Okay. So what exactly are they asking for with this, that you're asking for?
I am asking. Here's the road that goes up, there's a picture in your packet that shows how steep even this one is. As opposed to the signs. I mean, you can, on this picture here, you can see how steep it gets really quick. This is where that access goes in. Right here. This picture here.
Oh, that one.
And you can see it goes up through here.
Okay.
And that's the only way this guy gets to his house.
Oh, okay.
You can see how he gets to his house, isn't that? This is too steep up here. I mean, you can tell, like this is here, these pictures, how steep that is, running along Collier View. This plat was recorded in 1978, before we had planning and zoning, that's how these plats got through. We don't do these anymore.
And the guy developed the north side and built all the roads, but the south side, he went bankrupt and didn't finish the south side. That's why Collier View Road and Hilltop are steep and narrow and scary roads. I drove through those last year, and it's unbelievable, some of them.
So your 30-foot easement is here. I don't know if those purple lines are accurate or not. We did, we shared drive variance, and.
Cindy, to go back just a step, how did that road get built if it's not on that easement then? Well, you had to go through all of the different properties to get there. This is immense.
Well, the person that goes through the lots was given, was given a shared drive variance in 2005.
Okay.
So every one of those neighbors signed off that they were gonna allow that road through there?
Because they're using the road.
Those three, yeah, well, they have the potential. The only house that actually accesses up there. So the problem, and someone else has asked for an address, I can't remember exactly which one, but this guy, his driveway enters down here, but his address is 468, so if you're an ambulance and you go up here, you're gonna be looking for a driveway here. And actually, his driveway is down here, so if we give him the address of, oh, say 15 Collier Ridge Road, and lead them down to Collier Ridge Road and lead them in here.
Yeah.
It's just directional, it's a, a emergency thing. If we gave them the address 478, or 480.
480, yeah.
478 A or B, I mean, that's not what 911 wants to dispatch.
So this is a request of dispatch?
This is a request of me to comply with the requirements of dispatch. Somebody wants an address up in here. This is the road that you're going to use.
So it, it almost looks like you need to make that road an official road.
That's what we're doing.
And then, and then you're gonna have to have those A and B addresses or whatever, right?
No A and Bs, she won't accept them.
No A and Bs, it's just.
No A and Bs, but if.
Address off that new road.
It's not a new road, it's an existing access, and we're going to give a name to it.
It'll be Collier Ridge Road instead of Collier View Road. Right? And it's gonna be private.
Private.
Okay, so that, will that resolve your address issue? Okay, so you, now that if you have a new road there, you can put the, now you can, you can assign address on that new road, even though it splits lots.
So have a logical way to get there.
Yeah.
Are the other homeowners in agreement with us that live on it?
Um, the only one we received, we noticed everybody in the subdivision, actually. We had the one, the person opposed.
Mike Fogner? You got those comments?
And then. Andrew from Earl's, he commented, says it makes good sense to him, and he's the one that has a house on one of the two lots that he owns, and he keeps the road in good condition. Want to assure to those concerned that the road is not abandoned and has been used for 38 years, and his address is the 468, but you actually go face out to get to the property. The ambulance will never get there. We're just trying to fix a problem that was created in 1978.
I'm okay with it, I just don't wanna create more problems in that area, it just feels like that, that subdivision is such an issue.
It is, and we have the letter from the fire chief who doesn't want building permits issued anymore. We would have to do a moratorium. That still doesn't cure the address issue.
Have you thought about making Collier View and Hilltop private, too?
Well, we're not. We'd have to vacate them.
Right?
That's a whole other.
That's a whole other, right? It'd be a big, pretty, pretty broad community intervention, wouldn't it?
I mean, we've had issues up here for years, people wanting us to fix them and allow them and everything. And we don't, because when the developer originally did this, it didn't go to our standards. And before we had P and Z, we had road standards. And so they were never accepted.
Those, those are all old wobbly roads. All they are, ski trails.
Yeah.
And we have announced, Cindy, where we don't issue any more building permits in there?
Well, we do. The, the fire department would want us to not--
They want us to stop.
--building permits on bad roads. I mean, that would include not just this area, but West Mountain and thousands of other lots, because they're not built to any standards.
Cindy, I don't remember, but do you know, like, the ground that was to the east of this, back down the hill towards Cabart? Was that state land? See, all this is state land? That's the cluster.
Over here, yeah.
Okay, well, if this is resolving an issue, then I would move that we approve the private road declaration.
We got to go through the public hearing first.
Sorry?
Um, but you're on the right trail.
So back to the staff report. I'll, I'll do it very quickly. Uh, the purpose is to improve the ease of assigning addresses that are in compliance with the standard protocols of the nine-one-one system and the GIS mapping systems. Um, this property is a thirty-foot access easement in Ponderosa Shores number two. Recorded at book seven, page three, on January ninth, nineteen seventy-eight. Variance fee seven oh five was previously issued for a shared driveway down on that lower part. Um, if this is approved, this is going to, um, the road name would be added to the official road, road name list in Valley County maps. Road signs would be ordered. Lots using the access easement for access would be readdressed. And the address change notification letters would be sent to property owners and eventual agencies once the road signs are replaced. We couldn't actually effectively go ahead and build, we have the signs in place. Leading limits was, was done properly. Public hearing, um, Collier Ridge Road, Central District Health has no issues. Stiefel has concerns and questions concerning the road since it's a terrible road, not maintained. People are building in terrible places and still expecting services. Public comments received, Mike Falconer, um, is opposed. And he's it, he's down on the south, this doesn't go through the property or affect the property in any particular area. And then the person along this road that is actually in favor, I listed persons of the Valley County Code that apply to this under five dash four dash four designation of road names. And then, um, I prepared for E resolution number twenty-three oh two, Collier Ridge Road, P and C, private road validation. And then signing that would actually put that in the official road name list. That ends my staff report.
That would be twenty-three dash what, two?
Yes.
You said?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that is in favor? Please let the record show there was none. Anyone opposed? Please let the record show there was none. And anyone that is neutral? Please let the record show there was none. But this time, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for deliberations or questions, or a motion.
Let's see, you've made a motion, uh--
No, I haven't.
Okay, it seems to me like there's, just kind of, one of the resolutions this thing does is just help them to get, uh, to meet a, which is on-- Undebol from nine-one-one. And, uh, what we have is what we have. It doesn't obligate us to anything other than, um--
Turns it into a private road anyway.
Private road, yeah.
But on the rest of it, it's there.
What else are you going to do?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, um, I just lost it, the actual number. What did you just clarify?
Twenty-three dash oh two.
Twenty-three oh two.
Three dash oh two.
No, second that.
Who didn't second it in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Easy peasy. So at this, we good? So at this time, we are going to recess for lunch, and we'll see everyone back here around one o'clock.